Welcome to the March 20th, 2025 Planning Commission Hearing. I will call this hearing to order at 1:04 PM. Ms. Carmen, can we please have a roll call?
Thank you Chair Wardlow. I'll begin with Chair Wardlow.
Here.
Vice Chair Boss.
Present.
Commissioner Burnwell is not present. Commissioner Bauckey.
Here.
Commissioner DeLucio.
Here.
Commissioner Peterson.
Here.
And Commissioner Wiscombe.
Here.
We have a court. Thank you.
Thank you. We will begin with preliminary matters, requests for continuances, withdrawals, postponements, or ex-agenda items. Ms. Arzeneega, do we have any?
Thank you Chair. We do not.
Great, thank you. Do we have any announcements or appeals?
Yes, we do. We have one announcement of the appeal for 101 Garden Hotel will be heard at the California Coastal Commission Hearing on April 10th.
All right, thank you Ms. Arzeneega. We will now move on to Item C, Review, Consideration, and Actions on the Following Draft Planning Commission Minutes. We have March 6, 2025 Planning Commission Minutes. Are there any Planning Commissioners' comments on the minutes today?
I'll move the minutes.
Second.
Great, thank you. Ms. Carmen, can we have a roll call?
Thank you Chair Wardlow. I'll begin with Commissioner Bauckey.
Stayed.
Commissioner DeLucio.
Yes.
Commissioner Peterson.
Yes.
Commissioner Wiscombe.
Yes.
Vice Chair Boss.
Upstayed.
And Chair Wardlow.
Yes.
Motion passes, thank you.
Thank you, and that takes us to Item D, Comments from Members of the Public Pertaining to Items That Are Not on Today's Agenda Due to Time Constraints. Each person is limited to two minutes. Ms. Carmen, do we have anyone in person or remote that would like to give public comment for items not on today's agenda?
Thank you Chair Wardlow. At this time, I don't currently have any speaker slips for general public comment, but if anyone in the room would like to speak under general, they can fill one out and bring one up to me at this time. But I'm not seeing any movement. Moving on to virtual, we do have four participants and one has their hand raised, so I'm going to allow Steve Johnson to speak. It should be good now.
Thank you for the opportunity. At recent reviews of the annual progress report, state bonus density law has been disbarged. I believe this is due to an incomplete understanding of the law. A presentation by staff might help clarify the law for commissioners. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. I don't currently have any other hands raised for general public comment, but if anyone else would like to speak under that, they can raise their hand at this time. And I'm not seeing any other hands raised, but I will acknowledge that we did receive written correspondence from Steve Johnson, Wayne Mellinger, and Steve Johnson. And I'll give it back to you.
Thank you Ms. Carmen. We will now close general public comment for items not on today's agenda, and we will move on to Item Three, New Item, A Concept Review of a Housing Project Proposed for 418 North Milpus Street. We have Ms. Kathleen Kennedy, project planner, with us to provide a staff presentation. Ms. Kennedy, the floor is yours.
Thank you Chair. I'm Kathy Kennedy, project planner for this project. I'll be presenting the concept review presentation. So the address is 418 North Milpus Street and 915 to 923 East Gutierrez Street. The purpose of the concept review hearing today is because we have a project that is an average unit size density incentive program project. It's also has a lot area greater than 15,000 square feet, and it has a land use designation of high-density residential. Because of that, a concept review hearing is required, and during this hearing, the Planning Commission will provide comments regarding the design, overall improvements, and consistency with the city's general plan. And these comments will be conveyed to the Architectural Board of Review, who is the decision-maker for this project. And no appealable decisions will be made at this hearing today. So here's the project location. It's over on North Milpus Street. It consists of two lots which would be merged, so we have 418 North Milpus Street here and 915 to 923 East Gutierrez Street here. I'll give you a brief summary of the project. Again, it's a lot merger, and the lot area will equal almost an acre when merged. The project includes the demolition of 8,550 square feet of commercial space and eight residential units. And the new project would be a mixed-use, four-story project consisting of 90 residential rental units, nine of which would be very low-income, and six moderate-income. It would be 850 square feet of commercial space along Milpus Street. The project includes 69 vehicle parking spaces and 128 bicycle stalls. There are a number of applicable regulations and policies that apply to this project, so I wanted to go over those briefly. It is an AUD project, so it comes under the AUD program requirements. Title 22, Public Improvements, also under Design Review for ABR Review, Environmental Review, also the Tenant Displacement Assistance. This project is also a state density bonus law project, which allows higher density for having affordable units, and also allows some concessions or waivers, and we'll talk about those in a moment. It's also a builder's remedy project. However, in this case, this project is not proposing any elements that are inconsistent with our general plan or zoning, nothing beyond what the concessions are, again, which we'll talk about. And then it must be consistent with our general plan policies. So in regard to the AUD program, the units range from 350 square feet to 974 square feet. The maximum average unit size allowed is 811 square feet, and the project is under that as at 632 square feet average. Here's the table from the staff report outlining the different zoning requirements. The project does conform to all setbacks except for the front variable setback along North Milpus. It is a little bit over high height. The height requirement is 45 feet, although the Planning Commission could approve up to 60 feet under height exception approval. The vehicle parking spaces, it has a requirement of one per unit for the units, and then one per 250 square feet for the commercial. The applicant is asking for a concession regarding the setback on Milpus, a development waiver for the height, and we'll go over the parking shortly. They have increased density under the state density bonus law, and again, I mentioned the maximum unit size on average is 811, and they're under that at 632, and they provide additional open yard area than what is required. So in regard to state density bonus, the base density for the project, under the priority housing overlay, is 63 dwelling units per acre. Since it's a little bit under an acre, they're allowed 60 units. Because they are providing 15% of the units as very low-income, which would be nine units, they are allowed a 50% density bonus. So 50% is 60 times 50%, an additional 30 units, so they are allowed 90 units on the site. They qualify for three concessions, as well as waivers and reductions in development standards. They are proposing just one concession, which is the relief from the five-foot variable setback that I mentioned on just the frontage on Milpus Street. The development standard waiver they're seeking is relief from the 45-foot height requirement. The maximum that they're showing is 50 feet 9 inches, although there's architectural elements that are a little bit higher than that, which we don't count in the building height. For a parking reduction, if at least 11% of the units are very low-income, parking can be reduced from one space for these units, and it's one because they're a studio, one and two-bedroom, so there would all be one space required. That can be reduced from one space to half of the space per unit. So the requirement under this would be 45, however, they are providing 65 instead. And the project does provide 10% of the units as moderate-income units, so that's 10% of the base density of 60, so that's six units of moderate-income housing. I'm going to briefly go through the plans. I know the applicant will be going through these in more detail, but I'll just go through them quickly. Here's the first floor, site plan. So here to the left is Milpus Street. This is the commercial area, access to that. If you go over here, it wraps around to Gutierrez Street. There's a shared driveway here, so this is the vehicle access to the parking area below. There's access to the residential lobby on the first floor and bike parking, and there are a few residential units on this side on the first floor. For the second floor, a number of units, studios, one and two bedrooms. There's also a podium, outdoor area here, outdoor space for the units. Third floor, just additional units shown. This area in the middle here is open to the sky. And then on the fourth roof plan here, you show some of the terraces. There's a roof terrace here near Milpus, a couple of roof terraces here as well. Here's a view of the North Milpus Street elevation. So this part here is right on Milpus. This, you can see, is setback. There's other uses in front, the Rusty's Pizza here and a parking area. Here's the East Gutierrez Street elevation, again, entrance on the first floor here to the bike parking and access to the units, and the driveway would be here on the left. So we're asking you today to have comments on general plan consistency, so I'm providing some, provided in the staff report, a list of policies, and I'll go through those briefly, how this is consistent with the land use element. The project's located in an area of commercial high-density residential, and this is the parts of town which are the highest density. They're near major transit corridors, and these are where the highest densities are encouraged. And it's also in the priority housing overlay, which encourages density even higher than the AUD program. In regard to housing, this is, of course, a housing project primarily. It's consistent with the number of the housing element policies regarding infill housing, priority housing, community benefit, affordable housing projects, and rental housing. In terms of circulation, the location of the project is close to bicycle transit facilities. It's providing a large number of standard and non-standard bicycle stalls for the residents. Given the location of the site, there's a variety of transportation options available to residents. And just to note, at this point, the city did run the traffic model, concluded that there would be no project-specific traffic effects from this project. In terms of environmental resources and conservation element, the mountain views are intermittent along Milpus Street. There are a number of one- and two-story structures in the area, and they do block the views of the mountains intermittently. So views, however, views of the Riviera and the mountains, as viewed from the beach and other important public areas, would not be impacted by this project. The project requires designer review by the ABR. The project did go to the ABR in 2018, reviewed a slightly different project at that point. Also, in August of 2022, the project was reviewed, which consisted of a four-story building with 90 units and an increased amount of commercial area, which has now been reduced. And ABR at that time did express some concerns regarding the mass bulk and scale and neighborhood compatibility. The applicant has made changes to the plans since it went to ABR last. They reduced the size overall, they eliminated the bed and breakfast component, increased the number of parking stalls, reduced massing, and increased setbacks along both streets. They further articulated the north elevation, made some changes to the mass bulk and scale, reduced the building height, and designated a loading stall for the smaller-size delivery and service vehicles. And I just show you here the setback from the residential area here to the right, how the building is setback further. When the project goes to ABR, as you know, there are project compatibility findings that are required to be made, and I've just listed those here for your review. The project has gone through environmental review. It's been determined that the project qualifies for an exemption, infill development project, infilling exemption. And finally, our staff recommendation is for the Planning Commission to provide comments by majority vote regarding the design and improvements and consistency with the general plan, and these comments and recommendations will be communicated to the ABR for their future deliberations. That concludes my presentation. We do have transportation planning staff here as well, if you have questions for them. Thank you.
Thank you Ms. Kennedy. We will now hear from the applicant. I believe it's Donald Batesomis.
Jan Hochhauser.
Nope, okay. And Carol.
Ginger Anderson.
Ginger Anderson.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you both. Ms. Carmen, would you please let us know how much time the applicant has for their presentation?
They will have 15 minutes for their presentation.
Okay, thank you.
Would you please state your full name and relationship to the project for the record?
Okay, my name is Jan Hochhauser. I'm with the architectural firm of Hochhauser &amp; Blatter. We've been in town for over 30 years, working on different projects, and I'm working with Ginger Anderson and the project team. And I want to start off today and quickly thank everybody involved, the staff, ABR, everybody that's contributed to refining the project that's before you today. And we think we have a very responsive project. We're excited about it. This first slide that you see is a view across the intersection of Milpus and Gutierrez, looking to the northeast at the Riviera, and you can see the existing, what was 7-Eleven and is now going to be a Starbucks, and the proposed project wrapping around the two non-involved sites, the Rusty's Pizza site, its adjacent parking, and the Starbucks and its adjacent parking, and wrapping around to the rear. The next slide just reiterates the scope of the project site. On the bottom is Gutierrez, on the upper left is Milpus, and again, the two properties, the current Starbucks on the corner and Rusty's above it. Staff did a great job of going through the basic statistics about the project. If there are any questions, we'll come back to that. And then this just illustrates refinements that came about through involvement with the ABR concept review, reducing the mass on the Milpus and Gutierrez frontages by terracing back, reducing height, and articulating architectural features. Go to the next slide, the same on the east and the north elevations. The next slide is the key for the view simulations that were taken. So we took actual photographs from these locations and, using computer modeling, inserted the proposed model, the virtual model of the site, into these locations. So if we go through the slides here, again, this is the corner, the intersection, looking northeast. Next slide, this is down Gutierrez Street. This is from Reddick, looking across Milpus to the proposed frontage on Milpus. This is from the north end of Milpus, looking down, and recently, the Planning Commission agreed that that was one of the trees that's being removed, so new vegetation will be proposed on that frontage right there. This is looking east on Gutierrez Street. And then this is looking from the CVS parking lot north across Gutierrez Street. And from southern Milpus, looking up Milpus towards the project, you can see the roof of Rusty's. So at this point, I'd like to quickly jump to the animation. What we did is we had a licensed surveyor do a mobile laser scan up and down Milpus Street and east and west on Gutierrez to accurately create the context so that the modeling is real from virtual point clouds, and then inserted the proposal into that model. So here you're going east on Gutierrez Street, and you can see the frontage and the stepping back and the terracing of the mass, and there's the northeast property line, the adjacent neighborhood, and then the animation will stop and go back the other way. And that's the access. All the vehicular access is through that alley that serves all the adjacent properties. And now you're on Milpus, and you're going north on Milpus, past the new Starbucks, the adjacent parking lots, the Rusty's Pizza, and then the frontage on Milpus, which is in fact much smaller than the frontage on Gutierrez, and then the adjacent properties to the north. So moving right along, we can come back to any of these exhibits if necessary. The next slide, which is number 15. This illustrates the project setbacks, which are more than required on the neighborhood to the northeast there. Zero setback on A to the north, commercial to commercial property. So that's a property line, frontage of the development. But B, C, D, and E, all those ground-level setbacks exceed the requirements, and then there's significant terracing to comply with the solar ordinance. So that, that's something we're really proud about, that the project does terrace back to not violate any solar issues. And then this just burnishes that. And the next slide quickly shows those sections from the subject property line. And it's pretty plain. You can see how it terraces back and that the actual ground-level setback is greater than is required. This shows the streetscape frontage. On this case, this is Milpus Street. And, you know, I'd like to point out that the proposal generates a 10-foot-five-and-11-sixteenths-inch width to the face of the building. And then beyond that, there's an arcade that even adds to the perceived width. And new vegetation is proposed on the frontage, and this just shows proposal compliant with public works standards. The same exhibit is prepared for Gutierrez Street, and you can see the frontages there. It exceeds the requirements and compliance with setbacks due to the averaging of the various features inside yards of the building. The next slide burnishes the parking standards for the project. There are 69 spaces in total, 66 residential spaces, three commercial spaces, and then one loading space. Next slide, please. One thing that's important about this exhibit is really burnishing and identifying the allocation of all parking access to the alley, which not only serves this property, but serves the new Starbucks and the Rusty's Pizza. And we chose this direction because we felt it does favor pedestrian utilization on Milpus Street. We wanted to avoid a curb cut in that narrow neck of the property on Milpus, and we think it's more consistent with policy to kind of consolidate vehicles for pedestrian aesthetics, pedestrian experience, and for traffic safety. You know, the other thing that this same exhibit, just a different slide, illustrates is the distribution of residential amenities on the ground floor. There are two lobby spaces and two elevator access points, one on Milpus, one on Gutierrez. The 850 small commercial space is on Milpus, and then other amenities, and, as pointed out by staff, some of the residential units on the ground floor. But the project boasts more than ample bike parking and two bike parking facilities, bike repair, extra bike space for electric bikes and bike repair. And then, in addition to the amenities on the ground level, there are amenities on the fourth floor, terraces on both the west, the south, and the east that have great views to the west, ocean views to the south, and Riviera mountain views to the east. And then finally, the next slide, if you will, that's just bike parking detail. This just burnishes the podium level or the second floor of the project. And in those brown-colored areas, that's podium level or one level above-grade common space, and it's oriented to be sensitive to the solar orientation. So it more or less orients on a north-south axis to allow good access for residential livability for daylight and sunshine. This slide just burnishing a great variety of unit types between twos, ones, and studios. Color-coded, the yellow are the twos, the greens are the ones, and the pinks are the studios. The purple is the common circulation. And you can see, as the foot, floor plate, I should say, of the project diminishes, that's indicating the step back of the massing. So each progressive floor level, as you go up, gets smaller. And you can see that level roof terrace is on the upper left to Milpus, in the middle on the right to the Riviera views and the mountain views, and then the south on Gutierrez, towards the ocean. And the next slide just shows the roof scape of the project. And one thing that I think is really nice about the project is that it really does incorporate the Mediterranean, Santa Barbara flavor, that it's largely employing sloped tile, red tile mission-style roofs, but still manages to hide the mechanical equipment, solar access, so that even from points afar, when you're up in the Riviera looking down into town, you're not going to see a big, huge roof mass, but a true Santa Barbara solution that's indigenous to the local architecture. And the next exhibits are landscape exhibits, and we can answer questions, but we maintain all the major existing trees. Somebody had asked about the oak tree that's being maintained, and there's a huge palm on the east property line there, just off of Gutierrez Street. So that concludes my presentation.
Thank you very much. Ms. Carmen, would you let the applicant know how much time they have remaining, if they want to address any questions after public comment?
Thank you, Chair Wardlow. You will have 5 minutes and 20 seconds remaining.
Wonderful. And that takes us to comments from the public on this specific item. It looks like we have a number of people here today. Ms. Carmen, can you let us know who's next for public comment?
Thank you, Chair Wardlow. At this time, I do have 10 speaker slips for public comment, but if there's anyone else in the room that would like to speak, they can bring up the speaker slip to me, and I will add you into the list. The first three speakers we will have will be Natalia Gavani, followed by Jess Espinoza, and then Pedro Toscano. So Natalia, you can come up to the stand at this time. You will have three minutes, and I'll start the timer when you're up there.
Three minutes, correct? Okay, great. Good afternoon, Chair and Commissioners. It is only a rapacious property owner who would consider building a project of this magnitude to wreak havoc on our Eastside community. With an existing weak infrastructure, limited parking availability, and a struggling quality-of-life element, this project absolutely has no place here. Santa Barbara is known throughout the world for its charm, quaintness, and distinguished architectural designs, which are clearly lacking with this project. It has a cold, sterile, and numbing feel like that of a penitentiary. In fact, I have a business in the property located at 422 Milpus Street, and having to be encompassed by two neighboring towering walls, each with hallways attached in between one another, is stifling, to say the least. More of my natural light and limited view will be diminished with this monstrosity. Though on a smaller scale, this mirrors the time when the property owners built a two-story condo at 918 East Haley Street, completely obliterating the majestic views many of the business owners enjoyed looking at on a daily basis. And though this applicant is using every available tool in his box to maximize density, we are still coming up empty-handed in terms of affordable housing. The audacity to ask this commission for relief of height, setbacks, and parking is insulting and offensive, especially when he is displacing eight senior citizens on fixed incomes. These seniors have resided there for years and are very concerned and distressed about the news of this project, because not only is the property owner giving them two years to move, but their limited financial resources restrict them on where they can reside. So I strongly urge this commission to delve much deeper into the impacts of the environmental and aesthetic aspects of this project. This current penitentiary architectural style from Milpus Street going southbound is not conducive to a commercial district at all. The soaring height is unwelcoming and hostile for a retail business experience. As well are beautiful and majestic views of the Riviera, which now can be seen from Milpus and Gutierrez, will become obliterated with just a small view resembling a barnacle on a hump whale. The Eastside residents and business owners deserve the story polls to be required for this project. They need to get a sense of the magnitude of it as it is precedent-setting.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next up, we will have Jess Espinoza, followed by Pedro Toscano and Kristin She.
Good afternoon, Council, or Chair. I'm all for change and making things better, but this is pretty massive. It's pretty big, especially four stories for Milpus Street, and it will obstruct the view of the people on Aliso Street. I understand some people will be, have to be relocated. Most people have more than one car per family, so parking is going to be even more ridiculous. It's going to affect all the businesses on Milpus Street, the side streets. As Ms. Gavoni says, she has a business, and she'll be looking at a 30-plus-foot wall, which will eliminate her sunlight into her shop, and which will require more electricity. There's other things that need to be taken care of on the Milpus corridor, other than putting something of this mass and scale. If they want to, it's got a lot of reducing to do. Let's take care of the other issues in our neighborhood over there, like our sidewalks. Replace them with concrete, not asphalt. And there's many others I can talk about, but just wanted to say that this project could be scaled back. Thank you.
Thank you. And also, I just want to say, if everyone could please hold their public comments and claps, we'd appreciate that.
Thank you. Next up, we'll have Pedro Toscano, followed by Kristin She and Joara Gutierrez.
Hello. Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Commissioners. How are you? And thanks a lot for your time. My name is Pedro Toscano. I'm a business agent with the Western State's Regional Council of Carpenters. I live near the vicinity of this project, and I believe I will be impacted, and many, many members will be impacted by the environmental impacts of the project. The city should require the project to be built with contractors that will hire locally, pay prevailing wage, utilizing apprentices from certified apprenticeship training programs. Workforce requirements reduce construction-related environmental impacts while benefiting the local economy and workforce development. In a recent 2020 report titled "Putting California on the High Road: A Jobs and Climate Plan for 2030," the California Workforce Development Board concluded that investments in growing, diversifying, and upscaling California's workforce can positively affect returns in climate mitigation efforts. The South Coast Air Quality Management District recently found that local hire requirements can result in air pollution reductions. Recently, the State of California reiterated its commitment towards encouraging workforce development and housing affordability through the Affordable Housing and High Roads Jobs Act of 2022, otherwise known as Assembly Bill Number 2011, which requires projects to pay workers a prevailing wage and hire from state-certified apprenticeship programs for projects meeting certain sitting affordability and development standards. Thank you very much for your time, and we are opposed to this project.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we'll have Kristin She, followed by Joara Gutierrez and Britta Bartels.
Thank you. I think it's a beautiful project, I do, actually, but it's just not in the right spot. And I'm strongly against this project. I live, actually, right behind it on Aliso Street. And so, you know, I just want to let you guys know that our parking is so impacted already. We have such a hard time. It's kind of like a game of musical chairs. Do you guys remember that? How you, you know, you're kind of just, we rush home, and we kind of want to find a spot, and our neighbors, or the neighbors over on the other street, they come and they park in our spot, so we have to park in another neighbor's spot. And, and it's hard, because, you know, I do invite you guys to come over and visit, not in the day, but, you know, at night, and see what it's like, because then you have to park far away, and then you have to walk, and it's dark. And maybe not you, but maybe your daughter, or, or one of your children have to walk. And you know, it's hard, because also we don't have lights, you know. I have, we have one street light on our block. Also, you know, with, just disabled parking lots, or disabled parking spots, we have one, I have a 103-year-old neighbor, she's 103, she has a disabled parking spot. 50% of the time, it's, it's taken, you know. We don't take it, we know not to take it. It's for her. Usually, okay, let's, most people have, in order to afford it here, there's probably two people working, and each people that work, they have two cars. So it's 90 units, that's probably like 180 cars, okay? Maybe not two people in each spot, but let's say, okay, minus 65, that's 115, say maybe 100. That's 100 more cars in our neighborhood. That's a lot. That's a lot of cars. That, we already don't have space. Literally, we just don't. So I don't know what we're going to do with 100 more people and 100 more cars. And it's, you know, and our views are great, and, you know, we are an impacted residential area. High density, we're very high density, so we can't have more high density in there. We just don't want it. And also, the seniors, can you come and visit our seniors? They are so dang cute and lovely, and they have to move. It's just terrible. Also, I just want to say that I just really, really hope that you don't put this there. Then, you know what? It's going to really lower our property value, and that's hard. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next up, we'll have Joara Gutierrez, followed by Britta Bartels and Danny Moreno.
Hey, good afternoon, everyone. I don't have a prepared speech, but I have several points here that I want to point out with regards to this project. I, I live adjacent to that proposed project. Nobody would know, except me, of what can be detrimental effect within the neighboring properties, because I live right adjacent to this project. And our, our house, if this will be the project, our house is directly over here, our next-door neighbor is a little bit higher, about one foot, and when we have torrential rains, and I've witnessed it, all the water coming from this direction goes to our property. And our property, unfortunately, slants backwards like this. The street would be over here in front. The water, every time there's torrential rain from our, from the neighbor over here, will flow like waterfall in our property. It doesn't go towards the street. This is Gutierrez Street, this is Milpus Street. The water goes over here. So I would, I would assume that this project will not be lower than ours. It will be a little bit elevated, and when that happens, all the water from this portion will be pulling in our property and also the property behind our property, because the topography of our place goes slantly like this. And I've seen it. When we had torrential rains, all the water was flowing like waterfall. Our property doesn't go this way, so every water will be stationary over here and then the next-door neighbor. Another thing, they said that, you know, the four-story property will not affect sunlight. I, I really disagree with that. So this is our property. Can you imagine? This is the four-story property. The sun rises this way, and it will turn around this way. If there's a property 45 feet or so, what do you think's going to happen? It's going to block the sunshine this way. It's not a no-brainer. And the traffic, I don't agree with their findings that it will not. And the traffic, I don't agree with their findings that it will not affect traffic. There's already traffic already by itself without the property, much more with more cars, more people living in that property. They will be finding parking spaces everywhere, and they will also be congesting all the areas. And also, the last point that I want to point out is, senior citizens, they are in fixed budget every month, and for them to be displaced with the high cost of living in Santa Barbara, where do you think they would go? And besides, I'm a real estate investor as well, and we're into real estates, and I guarantee you, every single year, the rent will be higher and higher. There's no such thing as rent going down, it will always be higher.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments.
Thank you. Next up, we'll have Britta Bartels, followed by Danny Moreno and Marshall Gilmet.
Thank you for your time. So I made a speech, but I decided to do it just without it. So we are living at 918 East Haley Street, and we have a rental unit, Unit B, which is facing that staircase I noticed on the map, and it's, we have had lots of surprises happening with what the current owner of 418 is renting out to. We are having a tent there where there is fish cut for bait, and in an open tent, so that smell comes over, and, you know, so we would be happy to have that gone, but I don't think we should have a four-story building, a monstrous building, blocking the sunlight. I saw that it's supposed to go away, the shadow, after 9:00 a.m., but we don't know if that's really the case. If it's not happening, you can't remove that building, it's a done deal. And then with this half a-car parking spot, that's a joke to me. I mean, we have a rental unit that we have had vacant since last year, the first of June, and somebody from your crew here applied for it, and I feel really bad telling everybody there is no parking. The first question is, how is the street parking? Because we have three cars. And then I say, I'm honest, I don't want to tell you a lie, there is no street parking available. It's already taken by the current residents and neighbors, and the newcomers that are moving in, they will not find parking, and they will hate to walk, like blocks, especially when there's street parking, or street cleaning on Mondays and Tuesdays. The people have to all crunch in on the other side where it's not cleaned. And we have a neighbor, we watch him every day, he's puzzling to make sure his work car has a space to park, so in the morning, he's moving his Silverado from the back out to the street, parks in the middle of Haley Street, then he moves his van from Express Ruder, and then parks his Silverado there, so he can have that spot later on when he gets off from work. And, I mean, that's what you should see, and that's what a lot of people do. They support each other to reserve a parking spot. If there are like so many more cars or vehicles coming in and visitors, and then not to forget about the CVS Pharmacy parking lot, I can swear that the people that are not finding parking will park there right after they closed or even before, so customers won't have parking going to CVS Pharmacy. And, yeah, so the mom-and-pop shops, they don't like this project because there is no parking for their customers already, so a lot of customers have to park not on Milpus but in the side streets, and that's where the other residents are parking. So it's just difficult to see this monstrous building coming in and taking the view away is a very, very big thing for us neighbors, so I'm just opposing it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we'll have Danny Moreno, followed by Marshall Gilmet and Emma Hanlon.
Hello, Commissioners. My name is Danny Moreno, and I've been opposed to this project since 2018, when it was first presented to the ABR Staff Hearing Office Meeting on Garden Street, where we had 69 neighbors opposing the Architecture Review Board. That was in 2018. I have been a resident from the East Side together with my wife since 2001, knowing the surrounding neighborhood for 24 years. The majority of the applicants here are renters, while few are owning their own homes. Over the years, rents have been doubling, and because of many families consisting of three generations be able to afford living in Santa Barbara, cannot afford to purchase their own homes. This means at least three vehicles per address required parking on the street, which is impossible to do after the city also created bike lanes and bulge outs taking away needed street parking. Per surveys and statistics, only 3% of the working Santa Barbarians are using their bikes to get to work. Our neighborhood consists of many service industry workers that would not be able to perform their jobs duties like construction or landscapes without having a automobile, while it is considered unnecessary by our government. On the top of that, the new rental units oppose to becoming only half of one-car parking spot, as its tenant only has a half a car per unit. I believe this excuse and rules will enable the creation of huge pharmacy bunkers, especially being approved by you as the Commissioners to cancel out realistic lack of street parking in Santa Barbara. In my opinion, the size, bulk, and scale are out of control and unsuitable and not appropriate for the location where no other buildings are taller than a two-story house. I'm asking you why these four-story concrete blocks are not built closer to an anguilla where there is plenty of land with no usage to, so they could not block out the sun and bother the solar setbacks. I remember when the current architect was asked to downsize the bulk and scale, it seems to me that nothing else has changed by looking at the plans. There are many businesses located on Milpus Street that do not provide sufficient parking for their customers. I strongly believe that from experience, tenants don't find parking, they will entitle themselves to abuse the near CVS, Starbucks, and Rusty's parking lots.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Next up, we will have Marshall Gilmet, followed by Emma Hanlon and Natasha Todorowick.
Good afternoon, and thank you, Commissioners. I come before you today as a tenant of this beautiful city of Santa Barbara and a member of the Santa Barbara Tenants Union, the representative voice for the true assets of Santa Barbara, the people who populate it. This property is not a dollar figure to be assumed by a corporate lawyer sitting in a high-rise on the East Coast. It is not some quarterly profit line to be accumulated by another private equity firm seeking returns on their annual investments. This property is the location for decades of human life, stories of love, survival, and passion for the community they share their experience and wisdom with. When we replace these stories with dollar signs, we no longer have our city's most vital member, its people, pushed out by higher rents entirely unaffordable for an overwhelming majority of its residents, Santa Barbara becomes the vacation spot of the rich and famous. I know from delivering Amazon packages for over a year in this city that it is not some hotel for those looking to escape. This is a city of families, a city of the young and the old, a city of education, healthcare, and working-class collectives that make a unique fabric that cannot be remade at the right dollar figure. I urge this Commission to consider how Santa Barbara spends its progressive initiative on the actual current crisis, dilapidated housing, absentee landlords, and skyrocketing cost of living. How can we remake a community by the light of its people and not the corrupted system that sees its demise as a more suitable outcome in the solidaristic work that we know makes and brings a community together? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we will have Emma Hanlon, followed by Natasha Todorowick and Paul Fletcher.
Hi, Commissioners. My name is Emma Hanlon. I am here today as an organizer with the Santa Barbara Tenants Union to voice our strong objection to this proposed displacement event. I want to focus my comment on the reality that the eight households at 915 through 923 East Gutierrez Street exist today. They are not already an afterthought, especially not to those of us who have met with the tenants there and have heard their stories. There are lives and gardens, community cats, front porch decorations, neighborly relationships, and networks of community that have been built in these eight cottages. When the Commission considers the details of this development project, the square footage, the setback distance, the bike parking facilities, remember that what goes unassumed and unacknowledged is the violent and inhumane displacement of the people who live there now. Ernestine De Soto, a lifelong Santa Barbara resident, a prominent environmental activist, a Chumash elder, and a mother, has lived in her home at 921 East Gutierrez Street for 10 years. When she first saw the yellow development sign tucked behind a bush, the person she thought of was her daughter, who lives just three blocks away. "I need to be near her and take care of her. I need to stay," she told me. Ernestine served this city as a nurse at Cottage Hospital for decades and is a beacon of local history and Chumash culture. Now, as her health declines and she struggles to receive necessary resources from the city, a city she's given so much to, we thank her by threatening her with eviction. "How are we going to move?" she asked me. "We can barely leave our cottages." Is this really how Santa Barbara treats its elders? Is this how we as a city want to care for each other? The following is a statement Ernestine gave me to read. "I've been here since 2015. I've been here 10 years. My daughter lives three blocks away. It would be very dangerous for me to leave her. I'm comfortable here, and I'd like to stay. I heard about this a few years ago, and I have to laugh. You cannot put lipstick on a pig that doesn't fit here. I've been in Santa Barbara since 1940, and I've seen so many changes. My mother is the last speaker of the indigenous language, and she worked super hard. I worked really hard, too. The city used to be a working-class place. We were poor, and we didn't even know it. Consider us, consider those of us on Housing Authority. We are an asset because we are Santa Barbara. I know a lot about Santa Barbara," she said, "what it is to be an Indian and what it is to survive. Nobody thinks about the value here, not the financial value, the history. We will all be displaced. Where are we supposed to go? I have to stay near my daughter. The Santa Barbara Tenants Union does not see the 90 units as a gift or a tenured center development. We are not fooled by the nine low-income units. We will not accept the crumbs from out-of-town speculators, and we strongly object this development."
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Next up, we will have Natasha Todorowick, followed by Paul Fletcher and Christine Newhauser.
From my home office on Tuesday, I believe I saw most of you doing the site inspection across the street at this property. And what baffled me, and I didn't know what you were talking about, I was on a call with a client, was I didn't see anybody pointing up the street to compare the heights, because part of your job is to look at compatibility. And if we look at four stories and the footprint that this is going to take up, the size of it, how massive this is, it does not look anything like the neighborhood that it is being dropped into with our little bungalows and one-story homes. You're going to hear a lot about, "We need to meet the RENA numbers and the state mandate, blah, blah, blah." Well, you know what? We are a charter city, and what that means is, we are not subject to mandates by the state, which means you can decide differently, and you can decide in favor of our communities. Now, I have a question which absolutely baffles me. When I was looking at the drawings, I was looking at it going, "Well, it's really interesting, because we've got the Starbucks, and then all of this massing behind it just looks like a little bit above the Starbucks, just a little bit above the Rusty's Pizza." So I'm curious, are these apartments being made for three-foot people? Because they look like they're only two floors high. And I don't understand why architects keep coming back over and over and over, and we keep seeing these massive things, and they look like these teeny, tiny, little bits that aren't really going to impact a community, but then when they are built, everybody's like, "Oh, I never had any idea that it was going to be so big." What do we think four floors is? What do we think 90 units is? This massive thing looks like a giant apartment building dropped in from Los Angeles in the middle of our neighborhood. It does not fit. It is not compatible. The size is massive. The scale doesn't fit. It does not belong in a neighborhood of bungalows. Please say no to this project.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you. Next up, we'll have Paul Fletcher, followed by Christine Newhauser.
Good afternoon. Paul Fletcher here. As a 40-year resident and landowner in this neighborhood, I feel like I'm here again. It's déjà vu, because I'm going to say the same thing I said the last time I saw this project. By the way, nothing really has changed, and that is, this project is not compatible with the neighborhood in any way. I haven't seen a change from the last plans to here, they're subtle. I believe that this project might be saleable and well-used and liked a lot, maybe in Van Nuys, can't be in Los Angeles because that's burned down. My main concern is the Mountain View area, and secondary to that, if not more embarrassing, is to have a traffic department in the city of Santa Barbara with a straight face come on and say that there will not be any traffic problems. As an Eastside resident, you've ruined Aliso Street, making all the people that live around there fight for parking. It's terrible. And now we have a project that has 90 units, and you're only going to have 69 spaces? I'm sorry, the parking people are wrong. If you have two people living in a small place, you're going to have two cars. No one's using bicycles because they have to go out and make their $2,000, $3,000-a-month rent payments here, and that is not a job that's available in bike-riding distances here in Santa Barbara. I'm sorry. So with that said, I appreciate you being here. I hope you're doing your job better than the parking people are, and look closely at this project. The fourth story should be gone, and maybe then it could be somehow fit into this area. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. The final in-person public speaker I have is Christine Newhauser.
So what's at stake here is the East Side, really, and it's the view of the Riviera that is really at stake, and so is the charm of Milpus Street. You know, the city says that the only view that's protected is the view that's from Luccumber, not Luccumber, from Cabrillo Boulevard. They say that that, you know, because we've talked about views before, that that's not really protected, but if you live on the East Side, that view of the Riviera and also Santa Barbara is known, the nickname is Santa Barbara Riviera. And of course, what it really is, is not the mountains, those are the houses on that hill. So that will be obliterated. The fact that it's four stories and the style is so wrong and the bulk is so wrong, it just does not fit there. You know, the charm of Milpus Street, if you live over there, until you live over there, you realize it's actually really charming, and it's all because it's one and two stories. The traffic already backed up, where you'll sit with two rotations because of lane dieting, et cetera, and so that's ridiculous. And then the style, again, it just does not fit on the East Side. Maybe Luccumber Plaza or someone else, somewhere else, but it's just completely ill-fitting. And then, you know, we talk about the RENA numbers, and everybody who's a builder acts like, "Oh, we're doing so much for this city." But again, it's not affordable housing. I don't think affordable housing is possible in Santa Barbara at the beach. I don't see how that's really done. But no one seems to stand up to Sacramento and say, "This is ridiculous. We are a charter city," like someone said earlier. And if anyone saw Eric Friedman yesterday on City Council, I only caught a bit of it when he was talking about penciling out the number of houses that the RENA numbers, you know, had to be allocated, he said it was in the billions of dollars, because these units are costing about a million dollars a unit, and we're not talking about a house, we're talking a unit. So in Oxnard, my friend told me, there's plenty of this housing that's been built, and I still have time, and they're sitting vacant. So I just think this is really the wrong project, and I hope that you all will vote against it. Also, I don't know if I missed part of the presentation, but I thought I saw that there were no walls. were no walls on the Riviera side, on the backside, I mean, windows? That doesn't make sense to me. The company's called Riviera Vista. Why would you not have windows where the view is? So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. At this time, I do not have any other public speaker slips for in-person public comment. So I will be moving on to virtual public comment. We do have five participants, and four have their hand raised. I'm going to start with Steve Johnson, followed by Mary Ellen Brooks, and then Drew Carmichael. Steve Johnson, you may speak.
Thank you for the opportunity. A quick question. Does the city allow restricted units, which are required to satisfy state bonus density, to also count towards meeting the city's inclusionary requirement? This project is a state bonus density project providing nine restricted units, very low income. Do those nine also meet the requirement for the city's six inclusionary units? That would be consistent with judicial precedent as well as policies of the city of Beverly Hills, Burbank, et cetera. However, I actually know the answer. The city is basically disagreeing with the state and I guess hoping that no one will notice. And developers are kind of going along with that view. The project at 3805 originally pressed to have its bonus density units also meet the inclusionary requirement, and doing the towel, they are now providing inclusionary units as well. I fully support this project. Probably a good thing I didn't show up in person. But the project would be better as a 120-unit AB 1287 project. Same building envelope, just smaller units. The benefits? You wouldn't have nine restricted units, you'd have 18. Nine very low, nine moderate income. But the biggest benefit by far would be 36 units affordable by design. Affordable by design results from smaller-sized units without parking. Smaller unit size is completely consistent with the recommendation on page 11 of the general plan land use element. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next up, we will have Mary Ellen Brooks, followed by Drew Carmichael and Gabriella You should now be able to speak.
Okay. Thank you. Good afternoon, Planning Commission members. My name is Mary Ellen Brooks. I'm president of Citizens Planning Association. CPA has worked in Santa Barbara City since 1960, and members come from throughout the city and the county. And our mission says, "We will advocate for the best standards design in order to maintain sustainable communities and protect the heritage of Santa Barbara." CPA has consistently stressed the importance of public participation that can only come about with story polls. It's particularly important on the often overlooked historic east side that all affected have the opportunity to see for themselves what is proposed for this area of single-story businesses and residences. Few will have the time to delve into the details of an architectural report. Back in 2022, when the ABR hearing for the Miltus Gardens was going on, we asked for story polls. They were not erected. We continue to think that they are essential, especially for a proposal such as this, which will change irrevocably the central section of Milpus Street and the Eliso Street neighborhood behind it that is now mostly single-family housing. Local area residents, as well as all Santa Barbarans, should know what is looming ahead thanks to the builder's remedy. This proposal will have mountain views, which will be blocked from the street. The solid windowless wall right on the property will shade the adjacent small businesses, a design likely devastating to the tenants and property owner and other neighbors. We have studied the staff report noting that 90 units, only 65 parking places, and we mourn the demolition of the eight cottages, the housing for probably extremely low-income residents. Yeah, my eyes are going here. Hold on, please. The scale of this will dwarf almost all surrounding buildings and cast long shadows. In our opinion, proposal is incompatible, as you have heard from other speakers. Although it's not a historic district, Milpus is a historic area inhabited back into the 19th century and before. Focusing on the east side, the Haley-Milpus Design Manual has long been promised for an update since the May 1982 publication date. This is the guide with the goal to preserve and encourage housing and to assist small businesses and industry. And even so, the guidelines are still an excellent reference for area compatibility with many, if not most, of the houses pictured remaining, helping create a true neighborhood. The Miltus Gardens...
Thank you so much for your comments. Your time has been...
...the peublo district is definitely incompatible.
Excuse me. Thank you so much. Thank you. Next up, we'll have Drew Carmichael. You should be able to speak now.
Hello, Planning Commission, and thank you for taking the time to hear me today. My name is Drew, and I'm an organizer with the Santa Barbara Tenants Union. Over the past month, I've gotten to know many of the tenants who currently live at the East Gutierrez cottages. While the additional housing provided by this development is exciting, I want to urge the committee to consider the perspectives of the people currently inhabiting this space. By going forward with this development, you would be displacing people from their homes, many of whom have lived there for a decade or more. Several current residents have told me that they are frightened of the idea of being kicked out of their homes here at East Gutierrez because they don't have a safety net or backup plan to catch them. Beyond that, the tenants have cultivated roots here, both of the plants in their gardens and also their own, as citizens in our wonderful city of Santa Barbara. It would be a shame to tear out those literal and community connections by forcing them out of their homes and piling them out of their neighborhood. As the discussion of this development continues, I ask that the commission and the landlord ensure they treat the East Gutierrez tenants with the respect they deserve and the dignity to which they are legally entitled. Once again, the Santa Barbara Tenants Union strongly objects to this development. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you. At this time, I don't currently have any other hands raised to speak online. If anyone else would like to speak, they can raise their hand at this time. But I'm not seeing any raised hands. And I will acknowledge that we received written correspondence from Leah Romero, Brian Tangay, Richard Bornstein, Lynn Proctor, Steve Johnson, Anne Hefferman, Fay Perry, Lisa Jele, Sebastian Aldana Jr., Mary Ellen Brooks, Patricia Sayly, Jesse Espinoza, Lourdes Dorado, Denise Spangler Adams, Britta Bartels, Danny Moreno, Natalia Givani, Beatriz Dorado, and Steve Johnson. And with that, I'll give it back to you.
Thank you. So we will now close public comment for this discussion item. But first, before I go to my fellow commissioners for questions, I just want to acknowledge, I really appreciate all of you coming today and voicing your opinions and concerns about this project. Before we go to questions from the commission, would staff be able to give just a brief overview of the impacts of builder's remedy and kind of the limitations on this commission to address a lot of the questions and concerns that were raised today? Because I do really want to acknowledge that we hear you. Oftentimes, we share a lot of the same concerns that you do, but I want to ensure that the public is aware of the limitations of this commission's ability to kind of condition this a project based on state issues.
I can start on that. So the project is consistent with all zoning and general plan policies, other than those concessions that they're asking for, the setback, parking, and the height. So they're not invoking builder's remedy to ask for anything above and beyond. They are consistent with everything else. So they're not asking for extra floors and such. So it's not necessarily a consideration in this project.
The question that I'm trying to get clarity for the audience is kind of our ability to condition anything regarding additional parking, the height limitations, things like that, as a number of public commentators mentioned, things around, you know, concerns around the size, bulk, and scale of this and the, you know, parking concerns.
Madam Chair.
Because this qualifies.
Chair Wardlow?
Yeah.
Excuse me, sorry. So if they had exercised builder's remedy, they would be entitled to waive pretty much any zoning development standard to build generally whatever density they want. So they've chosen not to do that. They're exercising the state density bonus law, which could give them also more waivers and concessions, but at this time, they're only asking for what, like the two that Ms. Kennedy said. And then I believe you, just to clarify, I think the applicant still have more time.
Yes. All right. Well, if the applicant would like to respond to any of the comments made today, we're happy to give you that time now, or we can go to commission comments, questions.
Hi. Hi, everyone. My name is Ginger Anderson. I'm an applicant's representative. I'm here with the architects, the owner, and Beth Collins from our office. I did want to talk about, same kind of repeat what Teva said. Yes, the project was submitted, did submit an SB 330 application, preliminary application at a time where the housing element was out of compliance with state law. So it could qualify, but we are actually not exercising any of the benefits or what some might, well, we're not using the builder's remedy at this time. We are allowed, qualify for half a parking space per unit. We are providing more than that. We are using, for the setbacks, I just want to be very clear, the setback that we don't meet is the variable setback on Milpus. And it is only, the project does actually tier down on the edges in response to the neighborhood. As staff said, the project is consistent with policies. And so unfortunately, the, oh, and then I do also want to talk about size, bulk, and scale a little bit. Under the AUD ordinance, the average unit size can be up to 811 square feet, and this project actually does provide an average unit size of much less than that, 630-ish. So to the extent it is 90 units and it is allowed to be 90 units, these units are smaller. The design did get smaller in terms of mass, bulk, and scale. And so I also wanted to say, you know, the project provides a good blend of studios, one bedrooms and two bedrooms. And I think one of the commentators suggested that the developer is an out-of-town developer or that is coming in to give, I think the word was crumbs. This is not an out-of-town developer. It is a local developer. It is a local architect. The attorney on the project does sit in Santa Barbara, not on the east coast. You know, I just want to kind of, there's this sense of the other here that I think is a little bit unfair. As to the tenants, I mean, that is, it is sad. There is going to be eight units that are going to be replaced. The project will be complying with local ordinance regarding tenant protections. There's also state law. If it is that these tenants do qualify, and again, it's not based on rent, it's based on their income, if they are very low or low, they do trigger state law's government code 65913 that talks about providing an equivalent-sized unit. So there are protections in place. It is what it is, I guess. I mean, it's 90 units in place of eight. The cottages themselves have been analyzed for potential relocation to other spaces in the city. They can be picked up and moved over. The owner does need to find a receiver site for that, but it is something that can be done. And then finally, I did want to address the moderate-income units, the inclusionary. So I believe there has been very recent change in understanding of the inclusionary. The project is only utilizing bonus density based on the nine very-low units to get from 60 units to 90. By providing the inclusionary units, the six moderate units, the project is actually entitled for another 32% increase over base density. So what that means is this project could be 110 units by providing these inclusionary. So we're not maxing out. We're not relying on builder's remedy. We are trying to be as responsive as we can and still provide the number of units. So, you know, we have worked within the rules in place, and we are providing more than we need to, and we aren't, the project is not, sorry, I take these things personally. We are not, the project is not maxing out these things. So I just wanted to address those items, and we're here for questions.
Thank you so much for your additional comments. And with that, we will go to the commission for questions. And first, we have Commissioner Wiskom.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you for all of you who came here to speak today. As our chair said and was answered about what we can do here, it's very limited. So we just pass our comments on by majority vote to the Architectural Board of Review, who will actually be the decision-maker on the project. Just to, I want to go to, I'm going to start with, Ms. Kennedy, could you put up Slide 23? That's the plan revisions. And Mr. Hockhouser, if you could come on up, because I'm going to ask you to respond to these. So this is the slide that Ms. Kennedy put up over the plan revisions that have been made since the last time at ABR, right?
Correct.
Can you, could you just go down the bullet points one by one and tell us what you did?
Well, so the overall volume and square footage of the project was reduced since it appeared in front of ABR. Working with staff to make a complete application, we refined the design. And the list you see before you addresses all the things that were done. So overall, the project was reduced in size. Originally, we were proposing a bed and breakfast on the ground level along the northeast property line. That was removed. We put some residential units there to reduce the mass. We increased the number of parking stalls, but I would like to alert the commission that through transportation standards, that actually ended up staying the same because of the rigor of clearances, turning radiuses, and things like that. Significant reduction of massing on the frontages, both along Milpus and Gutierrez Street, stepping wedding cake in it back from those frontages. Articulations in architectural design and carving up the mass, if you will, for lack of a better term right now. So, and again, that's reiterated in the next comment. The overall height was slightly reduced, and we designated an interior loading spot for smaller-size delivery service vehicles.
And what was the height reduction approximately?
Do we have that staff?
Are we talking six inches or a foot or?
No, it's probably like two feet.
Okay. And you say reduce size overall. Was that due to the wedding cake?
Correct.
Okay, okay. And then I wanted to ask you about parking stalls. Have you maxed out your compact stalls?
Yes. We're adhering to the basic premise that about 30% of the overall parking can be compact, and we also utilize tandem parking to create more opportunity for parking as well.
Okay, great. So, and are you unbundling parking?
Can you help clarify that for me?
Are you separating the right to have a parking stall from the rental of the unit?
Yes. In the management of the project, there would be a parking management plan and assignment of what units get the parking.
Okay, but I'm asking you, so you pay your rent, and if I pay my rent for my unit, if I want to park a car, I have to pay more?
I would say that there would have to be some program that addresses who gets the spot, and maybe certain tenants don't have cars or use public transit, and that's worked out in the project management.
You're basically unbundling parking, since everyone can't have a parking spot?
Correct.
Okay. And, let's see here. By the way, I want to compliment you on the plans. They're really very thorough. Online, the drawing set was 57 pages you've...
It's been a couple of years of work. Thank you.
Are the roof terraces shown on the fourth-floor plan available to all the residents?
Yes, they're all common terraces.
Okay. And then you have a fourth-floor amenity room, or amenity rooms, actually. Do you have any vision for what those will become?
They could be a conference room for residents if they want to have a meeting, a business meeting, a social meeting, or if a resident wants to engage for a small celebration, a birthday party, or something like that.
Okay. And then noted on the plans is future solar area. Are you putting in solar? Are you are you putting in solar for this project?
Capability for solar. One of the problems.
Not putting it in, though?
At this time, we're not, I can't say whether they'll actually be provided at the time of construction or after the fact. Just like EV vehicles, a certain amount have to be provided per code, but often we provide the electrical system that can handle the addition of EV parking spaces. Could be the same thing with the solar.
Okay.
I one comment to add to that is the typically in in Santa Barbara, the amount of roof space available for EV is limited. That EV doesn't make that much of a difference. I mean, you can use it to light your common area, your pathways and things like that, but there's not enough roof area to actually drive the load and service the load that these projects need.
Okay, okay, good. And I think I think that's it for you. Thank you very much, Mr. Hockhouser. My next question would be probably for someone that can tell me about Milpus Street and what's going to happen there in the vicinity of that, because council just took action on Milpus Street, so. You knew I'd ask you a question.
Yes. Good afternoon, everyone. I'm Jessica Grant, Supervising Transportation Planner with the city. So Commissioner Wiskom, through the chair, not related to this project, but there there are a couple of capital projects in the vicinity of this project, one being the Milpus Safe Crossings Project. The project boundaries for that, it's a focus on intersection safety improvements between Quinientos Street, which is the first street just after you come out of the roundabout, and you're going north towards Santa Barbara Bowl, up until Cannon Perdido Street. So there will be a focus, again, on intersection safety for installing curb extensions. Unfortunately, Milpus ranks number two for pedestrian versus vehicle collisions in the city. And this is a project to purely address safety, not only for pedestrians, but for all road users, and to help with better sightlines for the intersections.
Okay, so are you adding bike lanes or widening, you're taking out trees to?
There the for that project, there are existing, where there are existing bike lanes on Milpus will remain as existing bike lanes. We will win, this is also in tandem with a pavement management project to pave essentially from Milpus to Hitash all the way up to the bowl. But with the, I lost my train of thought. Oh, yes, sorry, with the bike lanes, we will have three-foot buffers on those existing bike lanes added, but no new bike lanes. Again, this is years of community outreach. What we understood from a traffic movement and when we went through lots of hearings was to not do a roadway reduction of traffic lanes south of Cota Street. So there will not be any changes for that. What was the change was to have a parallel facility to Milpus, which is Aliso's, and that was recently installed, 2024. That was not bike lanes. It was, but there were some traffic diversion to keep the vehicle volumes lower, so cyclists felt comfortable sharing the road with vehicles, because as many of the residents mentioned, on-street parking is in high demand, so it was to not remove the the on-street parking.
So so there's not with the Milpus, the this intersection safety improvements, et cetera, there's, you're not going to lose any parking spaces anywhere around this project?
In the vicinity, I do have, there there is 151 existing on-street parking spaces on Milpus in that corridor between Quinientos and Cannon Perdido. So this this site does fall within that boundary area. So with that project, we will lose three spaces on Milpus and one on Haley Street with that particular project. So overall, really, the the on-street parking is retained.
Okay. Lose three spaces. I don't need to know, I guess, where they are, since everyone here seems to go everywhere to park.
I do have those locations, if you want me to read that into the record.
Sure, go ahead, yeah. If you have it handy.
It would be the northwest corner and northeast corner on Cota, the intersection of Cota and Milpus, which is adjacent to Chapala Market and Los Sagaves. There is one parking removal southwest corner of Milpus and Yananali. And and then the other one, again, is on Haley Street, the southeast corner.
Okay, thank you.
Again, and most of those for the intersection crosswalk safety, when we install the curb extensions, most of those are going into all existing areas where it's already red curb for sightlines.
Right, okay, okay. And are you putting in the you're putting in the automatic like like they have on, I usually Yananali Street all the time.
There's the, it's called rapid flashing beacons. And there are two locations right now on Milpus with rapid flashing beacons. One of those intersections will turn into a traffic signal at Milpus and Yananali. The other intersection, Milpus and Ortega, will still have the rapid flashing beacons, but we will be further enhancing that intersection with additional improvements.
Okay, okay, thank you. I think that's, that's, I may come back again, but that's the extent for now. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner Wiskom. And now we will hear from Commissioner Peterson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have some questions. I'm also concerned about the tenants. How many tenants are currently living in the low-income units? Can we confirm that number? Or rather, how many tenants in those units are low-income?
Hi, everyone. Commissioner Peterson through the chair. There are eight tenants, it's eight units, and they're, the units are not currently deed restricted, affordable. The owner is taking Section 8 vouchers in those, but what their classification is, whether they qualify as very-low, low, et cetera, is based on their income, and our owner has never actually asked them for any kind of proof of their income. So it's based on income, and we actually don't know. So this is where the state laws come in with replacement housing. If it turns out that they do qualify as those qualifying income levels, there are replacement housing triggers in state law.
Are all of those tenants in there on Section 8? Is that what you said?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so they would then be low-income if they're on Section 8, right?
I'm not sure how that program works, sorry.
Okay. So and then following up on to what you mentioned, the state housing law, the Housing Crisis Act, which for units with low-income tenants, it requires both a relocation assistance and the right of return. Is that correct?
We are getting into an area of law that I don't, I work with lawyers, but I'm not a lawyer, so I would defer. I don't know if I can answer that question. Maybe Teva can help us out.
So and then I'm sure, I think it does, and my my question is, what is the plan for implementation of that with the tenants who are there now?
It's it's definitely our intent to be following all the applicable state laws and local ordinances, for sure.
I think Ms. Sosterner would like to comment.
Yeah, Chair Wardlow, Commissioner Peterson. Our own ordinance also provides for relocation payments and also the right of refusal for first to return.
And that's on, that's on all units? Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. And then my my second question is for the, or my second vein of thought, for the market-rate units, have you thought at all about a local preference policy?
Yeah, I know that's definitely a being discussed in the in the public discourse around housing a lot lately at the Board of Supervisors, to the Chamber of Commerce, those those types of housing element conversations. The owner is definitely open to a local preference. You know, we there's, we have to weigh fair housing law with that, but I think if we could study that of how that would work, and it's something that won't run afoul of other laws, yes, the owner's open to that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Peterson. We'll now go to Vice Chair Boss.
Thank you, Chair. I think most of my questions are focused on concerns about gentrification, current and future residents habitability. So I was also curious about the tenant displacement assistance. And so at this point, even though we're several years into the project, my understanding is that you haven't actually planned for tenant displacement assistance. Is that correct?
Madam Chair. And Commissioner Boss, I'm Bob Ludwig, and I've had the stewardship of this property for 21 years. I don't know if the owner, who you thought was the applicant, and that's Don Barthelmas and Carol Callman. The Callman family's owned and operated this property since the 1930s. It was the Callman Family Nursery, and in 1970, mid-'70s, they built two of the four buildings in question off of Gutierrez Street. I think those were mostly for their employees. They're all one-bedroom units. They're two duplexes, four units. In the mid-'80s, they added two more buildings, what we call the front buildings. And when they did that, maybe Brian will remember this, that the then-current parking requirements required one and a half spaces per one-bedroom apartment, and therefore they had to go to a level of restriction, and that was for seniors. And at the time, a senior in Santa Barbara was 62 years of age. So they took on that to be able to build those two additional buildings, those four units. Since I've had responsibility for this, we have, and I believe consistently since '04, with every lease, we've had the TDAO form, and we've provided it to them. We had no idea when this property would ever change what it was doing and how it was doing it, but we were aware. And my wife and I managed these units, and we got to know every one of those tenants. And I voluntarily took senior Section 8, which is difficult to do, because you're working with a sort of a governmental agency in the Housing Authority. Both the Galita Housing Authority and the Santa Barbara Housing Authority have placed tenants there. We now have New Beginnings, who places tenants there on behalf of the Housing Authority. I know every one of those tenants. I've cared for them for 20 years. When I took over, there was a tenant there who'd been there 21 years. I saw him to his last days, and that was true with many of those tenants. If anybody in this room behind me thinks I don't care about those tenants, they don't know who I am. We will take care of those tenants. Commissioner Boss, what is the exact plan? I don't know, but I have a track record of 50 years in this town, and I will care for those tenants. And they will be not only met with what the law requires, but with a a level of compassion that maybe the tenants' union doesn't understand.
If you don't mind staying there, I just want to make sure, I don't know that my question was answered, or the answer was that you don't have set plans, set plans for the tenants, and you haven't communicated them with the tenants because they don't exist yet?
Well, no, because I I wasn't aware that this was going to get approved. I'm not sure exactly what the timetable is. I had one come out when we were at the site visit, who came out and gave me a hug and said, how long do you think I can stay here? I said, it's at least two years. I don't know. I mean, in the current environment, I'm not prepared, nor anybody I'm working with prepared to start construction and the demolition. And as I mentioned on the site visit, I have studied the relocation of these structures, because it would be something I would like to do if it's if it's possible. And I'm not even sure I'd go to feasible. If it's possible to move those units, I'd like to do so, because they fit perfectly in your A, I get this mixed up, ADU and AUD, but I think it's a perfect ADU size. Those buildings are 1,400 square feet or 1,200 square feet. So if we could pick them up and put them on a large lot somewhere in the east side, it'd be great to preserve them.
Okay, so you did answer my question. There are no plans yet, so none have been communicated to the tenants.
Correct.
This question.
Other, excuse me, other than.
That you're going to take care of them.
They were provided the TDAO, and they signed it as a part of their lease.
Okay, thank you. And then a question, this may be for the architect. Curious about the placement of the very-low income and moderate-income units on, I saw, I forget the slide number, but page 19 of the plan set, it appeared that they were all clustered together, and was hoping you can explain that, and I'm not sure if there are plan, if there are plans to distribute them more effectively.
Yeah, the intention is to distribute them, and that's usually affordable housing standards, so that like you don't, not not that this is the best word, but you don't ghettoize the affordable units into one wing or one area of the project, but to distribute them throughout. Typically, they have, they have to have the same features, a two-bedroom has to be a two-bedroom, but they can be smaller.
Okay, so the plan set didn't reflect that. So that's a change that you'll be making when you go back to ABR?
We can identify them. I believe we were required on one exhibit to identify them.
It was it was page 19 of the plan set.
Yes, so there'll be further review of those, the location of those units. It's required prior to building permit issuance, so they'll be completely reviewed in more detail at that point.
Okay, thank you. And then a question about the parking as well. So I understand you're unbundling, so there isn't a parking management plan drafted yet. I also want to make sure that folks who are in the very-low income and moderate-income units have equitable access to parking.
Yeah, and they will.
Okay, but it's not in any plans yet?
Yeah, the the management plan hasn't been drafted yet for a lot of aspects of the operation for the building.
Okay, those are my questions for now.
Thank you, Vice Chair Boss. We'll now hear from Commissioner DeLuccio.
Chair, can I just interrupt for a moment? I want to just clarify about the tenant displacement ordinance, just to clarify that the applicant has done what's required up to this point, so they need to notify the tenants that this project is happening and have written forms noting that they've been told and that they will be offered financial assistance when this project moves forward. So they've done everything that's the city requires them to do up to this point in the the process.
Thank you. We will now hear from Commissioner DeLuccio.
Thank you. I won't go on much about that. Thank you for covering that, though. I really appreciate it, my fellow commissioners. You know, when I look at the description for the site, just have one more question. It says the existing use is vacant commercial slash senior housing. So maybe I'll, maybe someone can answer the question. Why does it, I understand there's seniors in there, but it's labeled senior housing. So is there, is that because of the Section 8? Is there some affiliation that we are using the word senior housing?
So Chair DeLuccio, so I added that in because it is, it's not a deed restricted, but it is restricted to seniors. So just to explain it a little bit more.
Because of the Section 8 program?
Not Section 8, it's because of the, it was related to the parking. So they were only allowed to have seniors.
Maybe maybe the applicant can answer that question. Because that's really, really important.
Chair Wardlow and Commissioner DeLuccio, I inartfully described that. In the mid-'80s, when the second two cottages, the additional four units were added, it is deed restricted. There is a deed restriction on title that all eight of the units are rented to seniors only.
Got it. And that was.
And they define senior as one member of the household being of age 62 or greater.
Thank you for that.
Yeah.
Sorry. So I'd like to move on and talk more about the project. Maybe you can come up here and help me out. When this went ABR in 2022, it was 52 feet high. That was the highest footage.
It could have been higher even.
I'm just looking at what the minutes said in the description. It was 52 feet. And now you're proposing 50 feet, nine inches, the highest height. How how come it's not 40, you know, 45 feet?
Well, it's a four-story building ultimately, and so typically, ground floor. And so typically, ground floor with parking and the potential for the commercial space and the amenity space, the first floor is higher. And then a typical floor-to-floor height is about 10 foot six, floor-to-floor for the three residential floors above. So with the pitch roofs for Spanish-style architecture, Mediterranean-style architecture, the height in the city of Santa Barbara is measured to the highest point of a gable roof or a shed roof.
Is that to give more space for the tenants on the upper floor?
No, it's for roof construction. If you can see here in the drawing on the screen, you can see the three, the lower-level floor and the three levels of residential with the roof forms on top of that roof plane at that point.
Thank you. So originally, you were proposing like a modified, I guess, bed and breakfast of over 6,000 square feet. And now you're only going to be doing an 850-foot commercial structure there. What happened to the square footage? If, you know, was that an opportunity perhaps to bring this square footage down?
Well, that's exactly what happened. But by the deletion of the bed and breakfast, some of that volume was able to be utilized for residential volume, and it allowed reductions to address the comments that the ABR made, such as the stepping back from the Gutierrez and the Milpus Street frontages.
The stepping back is on the east side?
It's both on the Milpus Street side, the west side, and the south side, the Gutierrez side.
So you addressed the east and the west?
Yes.
That was one of the concerns of...
And also, I would add that we addressed the neighborhood-facing side, which would be the northeast side.
And what did you, did you do anything on the north side to soften it?
Yes, we did articulate it. And there's an exhibit in the presentation in the slide package that shows the ABR presentation and the current proposal in front of you today.
And the issue with the solar and, you know, the shade and shadow, did you, have you done a shade and shadow study?
Yes. In fact, that was one of my responses that I didn't get to deliver. But when we were asked to kind of respond to some of the comments, there's a very carefully prepared, in the complete submittal set, which I'm not sure the commissioners have in front of them, there's a very careful solar study prepared. And that prepares it for both the fall and spring equinox. It prepares it for the summer solstice and for the winter solstice. And it's a very scientific exhibit. I believe, I attest to its accuracy. And it does show the enjoyment of sunlight for most of the time. The most extreme time for the neighborhood to the northeast would be at 3:00 PM or later in the winter solstice, when the sun is lowest in the sky. But I would point out that many of the existing structures already cast dramatic shadows like that. So the impacts are de minimis, relatively speaking. And I would, if the commission is really interested in this, I would call their attention to Sheets A04 and A05 of the comprehensive submittal. And I don't know if you could pull that up?
I think I'm fine with the explanation right now. I don't really, we don't go any further into that. So I want to make sure you have the shade and shadow and you have some rationale to how you're coming to the conclusion and just not stepping things down.
So I would add for the edification of everybody here that the solar ordinance describes the, where a volume of a structure can be relative to the property line. And it's in certain orientations that the sun would cast shadows. And we worked hard to comply with that step back so that we complied with the solar ordinance. The solar ordinance does not mean that a proposal will not cast a shadow. It just means that the available light and air for the impacted property is compliant per that solar ordinance.
I understand. The other thing is, I noticed that you reconfigured the units a little bit. The studios, when it went to ABR, were 34. Now they're 29. And the one-bedrooms went from 44 to 46, and the two-bedrooms from 12 to 15. So you sort of stepped up to the larger-sized units. You made them, you had more of those now than the studios.
Yeah, but the overall average had gone down. So if you took all the units, in other words, in the reduction of volume and area per the step backs, it forced us to create an average unit size for the AUD ordinance that was smaller than when we first went to ABR.
Okay, and the total square footage of everything is 101,204 or something? Is that correct?
That is correct.
And it was 108,2698 before?
No, no, that's the current project.
The current one's higher, rather. I'm sorry. It was 101, so it's gone up, actually. It's gotten...
Well, that's not a representation of necessarily, it could be ground floor area, parking area, and other features. So the, on the complete application, the exact areas are depicted for the ground floor, second floor, third floor, and fourth floor. And it includes the parking area as well.
Okay. One other question is, what are you, you showed us some images before. What do you call those images you're showing? How, with the building and how it would look? Are those 3D?
Those are view simulations. There are two types that we prepared. The, one of the photographic view simulations, which are taken from a specific location and then inserted into actual photographs from that location. So because this building is a virtual model in the computer, we could put ourselves at any point reference to that and superimpose it on the views that you see. And in response to one of the concerned neighbors' comments about how the building doesn't appear to be four stories, that's deliberate effect of the terracing and the articulation. And again, I want to underwrite the genuineness of what these depictions look like. And then on top of that, we went to the trouble to not only rely on the photography, but actually do a virtual laser scanning of the context, not our proposal, but of all the surrounding buildings up and down Gutierrez and up and down Milpus, to put the proposal in reality into that to show what you would see.
Okay, so we did see all that. But did you show us any before? To show before what the scenic views would look like and after what they would look like?
Yes, they are in the presentation set.
Can we see that?
Yes, you can, if the city can pull up the total set.
It's all right with everyone. I'm going to take a quick recess while they find the slides, and we'll just be back in two minutes, if that's all right, and if we can get everything pulled up. Two minutes? Three minutes? Five minutes, okay. Five minutes is all right. Thank you all.
Thank you all for the five-minute break. We will continue with Vice Chair Boss for questions.
Oh, me, I was doing.
Oh, I'm sorry. I greatly apologize, Commissioner DeLucio.
I'm like invisible here. That's okay. Anyway, you can explain.
Yeah, so here's the first slide we're going to share. And this is going north on Milpus. And you can see in the upper left is the existing situation today as it is without the project. And then in a larger photograph, superimposing the proposed building, you can see the impact behind the red roof there is that the Rusty's roof. And then you see the proposal behind it. And next slide would be 516. Then this is looking out. You see the view out of the CVS parking lot across Gutierrez. And, you know, you can see a little bit of the Riviera there between the trees. And this view, the proposal, of course, would block that at this location from the parking lot there. And then 515 shows going west on Gutierrez. And we're across the street from the project at the next intersection at the corner looking west. And you can see on the upper left as it stands today and then what the impact of the project would be.
Okay.
And then the next slide, 514. This is looking south on Milpus Street from the next northerly intersection. And that big tree out eventually will be gone. But you can see the clouds in the sky just to the left of the big tree in the existing context and the big palm tree, which is very tall. And then the insert of the forms for the project. And then finally, 513. This is looking east on Reddick, right into the Milpus Street frontage and the neighboring commercial property. So that left side of the proposal is the property line. And you can see the tree that we were talking about ultimately being removed in both photographs. And you still see the Riviera, but the building, if the tree was gone, would block some of that Riviera view looking east on Reddick Street.
Okay.
And then if you so desire, I could bring us to the shadow studies?
I think we're good.
Okay.
Thank you very much. I have one final question. It's more from Ms. Grant in traffic. So typically, 90 units would require 90 spaces, I would imagine, under the AUD. But they're only supplying 45 spaces. Is that a result of the city's requirement? Or is it more the state density bonus that's creating this?
Commissioner DeLucio through the chair. I do want to separate out between parking and traffic to explain what the analysis is for each. The parking, yes, that is a concession for the development. So they are providing less than the zoning requirement. Let me talk briefly about traffic.
Okay.
Because regardless, or even if there was, say, there was no parking on the site, sites still generate traffic. So as far as for review for this, and I think the residents are right, this Milpus is a very busy street, carries just right in this section about 23,000 vehicles a day. When we do the traffic analysis, and this is part of our Guidelines for Land Development review, we look at if a project results in a 1% impact to an impacted, identified impacted intersection. So in this area, the impacted intersection would be the Milpus northbound on-ramp is the one that's impacted. So with that, we analyze what the existing uses are on the property, and they carry different traffic generations because we look at what the net reduction of traffic is. And then regardless of what the parking is, there's traffic generations assigned based upon multifamily housing and then the identified commercial use. I think there was a typo in our staff report for the net trips. So I'll read that into the record. It's a net AM trips and then there's net PM. So the AM trips is 26 trips. And then the net PM is 23 trips. And so from that aspect, when we look at traffic again, and this is policy now, it's not, no longer environmental review. That was changed in 2020. So those AM and PM, it's during the 9:00 AM or 7:00 AM to 9:00 AM hours, the AM period. Then the PM period is the 4:00 to 6:00 PM. So when you distribute those, the net traffic trips, it does not result in a 1% change to impacted intersections. So that's just, I wanted to explain that just to remind the commission and then for the, just for the public comment, just to provide context and background for that.
Thank you. Do you look at AM and PM trips? Yes, which I see here you made a correction.
Yes, yes.
I guess, thank you for that. What about cumulative? Do you look at the cumulative trips, not only from this project, but from, you know, other projects or projected projects?
Yes, at the time when, so again, background, so the city has adopted traffic model. That was initially adopted during the 2011 general plan update. And then roughly every five to seven years, we do additional traffic model runs. So Planning Commission last saw that, I believe it was in December of 2023. So again, during the time when the general plan was written, level of service was the threshold for environmental review. So there was cumulative impacts to forecasted growth. And it just, it stood as it was a significant unavoidable impact to acknowledge that we're going to have some growth. We have the non-residential growth ordinance that puts limitation on non-residential growth in the city. So the highest and best use, in this case residential, can be built. So when we're, when we see purely residential projects, it doesn't really, although we still evaluate it cumulatively, it doesn't weigh in. It doesn't trigger the growth management ordinance. But we still, we still look at it. We still disclose it as a matter, again, of policy, just so the public understands. And then the new environmental threshold is the vehicle miles traveled. And in this case, where the project is located, is actually on a, it's all these wonderful terms, the high-quality transit corridor, meaning that the site abuts a transit corridor that has 20-minute headways. And that's applied to the residential use for that. So that project, it does not result in an environmental impact for vehicle miles traveled due to the location being adjacent to the transit corridor.
Thank you. That gives us a lot to think about.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner DeLucio, and my apologies for not going directly back to you after our break. We will now hear from Vice Chair Boss for some more questions.
Thank you. Apologize, I didn't highlight a couple of my questions before. So I did have a question about the north elevation design, and this was on page 21 or A 3.2. And it looks like there are no windows, and I was wondering if you can explain that design.
Yeah, so that's a zero property line development, and the Uniform Building Code requires that no fenestration because of fire protection that would address adjacent development in the future. So if one goes around town on urban infill, you can see many situations like this where there's a zero property line development and there's no fenestration. What we did do from, since the ABR, you could see on the right-hand side, that's the Milpus Street frontage, and it terraces back. We introduced some breakup, some minor recesses in articulation. So it wasn't just one sheer mass.
So all of those units have windows on the other side?
Right. Either facing Milpus Street, the interior courtyard, or the north. But notice at the very left end of that elevation that you're asking about, it does step back, and there are windows indicated.
Great, thank you. And then one other question. I think during the applicant presentation, I had a note that was on applicant slide 23. I thought you mentioned that the parking also serves Starbucks or Rusty's. That may have been a misunderstanding about the alleyway. Can you clarify?
Yes, that's correct. It does not serve either of those businesses, but they share the use of the alley. So the alleyway will serve the back of those two properties as well as this proposal.
Okay, thank you for clarifying those questions.
Sure.
Thank you, Vice Chair Boss. And we'll now hear from Commissioner Bauckey.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I've got a number of questions. I'll start with staff and then go to the applicant and then the owner representative. And also I have some questions for the city attorney. I'll start with the city attorney in this case because I think, I'm trying to understand how this project works with all the different laws and how are, how limited we are. First off, SB 330, which was adopted by the state, I want you to tell us, yes or no, whether or not charter cities are excluded like some people think.
Commissioner Bauckey through the chair. No. Under the Housing Accountability Act, the Housing Crisis Act, state density bonus law, the state has determined that the, even charter cities, because this is housing crisis is a matter of statewide concern, the charter cities are subject to all of these laws.
Okay. And so that includes AB 235, 2345, which is the state density bonus law. That also applies to AB 1287, which is the middle income bonus, which.
That's correct, with through state density bonus law.
Okay, so all those are mandated things in which we have to deal with with the parking. Should staff walk us through whether, and it's unclear to me if the parking requirements are a request under the state density bonus as a waiver? Or is this a project that's subject to other state requirements that allow zero parking? Which one is it, or is it both?
Chair Wardlow, Commissioner Bauckey, I can answer that. So we have on this project, one concession, one development standard waiver, and then we have the parking reduction that they're taking advantage of, which is because they have 11%, very low, they're allowed to have 0.5 spaces per unit. So it's under state density bonus law that that's allowed.
Okay, so they're not, this could be a zero parking project under state law, too. Is that correct?
They could use it as a development waiver to have no parking.
Okay, just wanted to understand that.
And Commissioner Bauckey, for the parking spaces that are provided, that is where my team reviews to make sure that they're compliant with the access and design standards. And there's also a requirement, when there's tandem parking provided, that that tandem space is provided to the, to one of the residential units, not multiple units.
Okay. And as you've done that review, one of the things in which other commissioners have asked, and I just want to confirm, that the applicant hasn't done the plan, I presume, from his comments and responses, is the unbundling process on this project. We haven't set forth the requirements, how the unbundling of the parking from the rental of the units is going to be done in this case. Is that correct?
So that's the management of how they want to deal with the parking for the apartments. We're not requiring anything required, requiring certain standards regarding that.
So we don't require it to be unbundled? Or is that just yet to be determined?
It's yet to be determined how they want to manage the parking with the units.
Okay.
And I just want to say, when I say no parking, that's for the residential. There is a commercial component, so the commercial parking would not go away. It's just the residential.
There was a comment in the letter from the legal firm about holding the potential of asking or requiring the loading commercial requirement to be a waiver. Is that, I read that in their, in their letter, and I was wondering what the city's response to that is.
Great comment. The, because we're seeing a lot of developments that are parking light, are absent of parking, again, doesn't, we're still needing a need for deliveries on-site. So the development does have loading, unloading areas. So think, even if you don't, or have in-vehicle deliveries becomes even more important. Think of delivery of groceries, the Amazon deliveries, the, you're still going to need service deliveries for a plumbing issue or you name it to the site. So that is being provided on-site. We do also work with Marborg, the applicant did. Marborg, through discussions, will be having their loading and unloading for the trash and recycling on-street.
Is there a move-in, move-out room and loading area? I mean, that's, you know, projects like this tend to have something like that. So that can be staged?
The, we would have loved it to have for the moving truck size. This site does not accommodate, that it would accommodate more of your Amazon-type deliveries. They would be able to on the move-in, move-out, and it's just onsite management using a portion of their driveway access for some of the move-in, move-out.
Okay.
But, and when we review these, we're very sensitive, as many of the residents said during the public comment, on-street parking is pretty precious. And just collectively, like, we're seeing just a lot of development. And again, we're in the state housing crisis, but we're the accessory dwelling units. There's been a lot of that development, and we're seeing a lot of the onsite parking removed, and that's just, it's allowed by state law. Just in general, the east side, you have a lot of multi-generational families living, and not all parking is accommodated on-site. So that is an issue, that there is on-street, the on-street parking need by the neighborhood. I think it's buyer beware or for the future tenants, if they don't have a parking space, it's a, it's a by-choice, too, and a lifestyle that you will be either reduced to one-car family or no-car families over time for that. And that's why it's really important that collectively to look at additional changes for transit to make that easier and walking and biking.
Okay. A follow-up question on parking. And this project is subject to the Haley-Milpus Design Manual. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. And the Haley-Milpus Design Manual does have a discussion about parking and contemplated in 1982, this thing's been around a long time, is the city establishing some common parking areas in the Milpus corridor that would be jointly used, mixed-use use, or city-owned. What's the status of any of that?
Great question. No status at this time for any public parking requests.
Okay.
I think collectively, it's a, we're trying to look at the residential parking permit system citywide, but it's a, it's a continued workload effort, not imminently immediate, but it's something as we start to see, again, the, what's the RENA number, the 8,000-unit target through time, that's going to have to be looked at.
Okay. A question for Ms. Kennedy. The, this project is an SB 330 project, and because of that, the objective design standards, according to at least the legal counsel's letter, was that they aren't subject to it. Could you tell us, and I didn't see it in your staff report, and I think it'd be very important to see what deviations from the objective design standards this particular project does have, so at least the folks at the Architectural Review Board understand what will be different about this project than what future projects would be subject to. Could you elaborate on what those deviations are?
I think I'll defer to the city attorney for that question.
Chair Wardlow, Commissioner Bauckey, we're still evaluating that, but it is a builder's remedy project. So if there are certain builders' remedy, we'll have to evaluate that. The project, if it's state density bonus law, it's still subject to all of our design standards.
Right, right. In fact, I find it very interesting that SB 330 is where the objective design standards come from, but because they were adopted after, you know, there's a lag time that the city took to get one together, we can't use them because they had their pre-app and got it. It sort of, it seems a little odd, though. That's sort of a commentary, and we'll leave that to later. And as to the builder's remedy, I, it's very unclear to me whether this could be a builder's remedy project, or because it seems from my reading of the legal counsel's letter, is they're holding that in reserve. They have not waived that. Is that correct?
So it does qualify, and yes. So they have not asked for anything above and beyond?
But they, they could hold that over our heads, yes or no?
It does qualify as a builder's remedy.
Chair Bauckey, yes.
Okay. I think those, I have one question for the applicant. Mr. Ludwig? And this is a question that you may not have the answer for, but I think, long-term, this is something I have been trying to wrestle with, which is, what is the current assessed valuation of your property currently? And you're paying, they're paying taxes, so you have an assessed valuation on those property tax records. And what is your going to be, upon completion, in a stabilized manner, the value of this property and what the assessed valuations of the property taxes would be for that?
Mr. Ludwig, I can advise you that you do not have to answer that question.
And I'll tell you why I'm asking that question. It goes back to, if we're going to see these projects, a enhanced first-class financing district could recapture this additional assessed valuation, and we could actually do something about affordable housing instead of just getting the scraps we get from state density bonus. That's my objective, asking that question, so you could, the commission could understand the ramification, and you don't have to answer, but I think that it'd be helpful for the community to understand that that could help the situation long-term, your project or others in the future.
Chair Wardlow and Commissioner Bauckey, thank you for the question. I understand it, and I think you're asking about TIF financing that would perhaps address. Let me just give you background on the parking, because I think that goes to one of the reasons you're asking. About 12 years ago, I brought the city, Jessica's predecessor, the About 12 years ago, I brought the city, Jessica's predecessor, the mayor, the planning commissioner, two or three other people, to the project site, and I said, this should be a parking lot. I've lived in the area. My first house was up Cota Street. I sent four kids to Santa Barbara Junior, Santa Barbara High. I know this area. I founded the Milpus Association. I know all those businesses pretty well. And I knew parking 12 and 15 years ago was an issue. So I offered that to the city. I said, why don't we take this property? It's an acre. They were just in the process of knocking down Whitefoot Meat Market, and La Groia, Taqueria, and a bunch of great businesses that they built afresh and easy. And, and it's big parking lot, which one of the people referred to today about residents having to park in the CVS parking lot, which they do. I would love it if the city would figure out how to put pocket parking, ala the city of San Luis Obispo, throughout the community, so that there were options and, and alternatives. I don't know what the tax increment financing capability would be. You'd have to adopt a TIF, I think it would have to be several ordinances before you get to me, but it's probably on the order of $100,000 from this project, increment. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah.
So those are my questions, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Bauke. We'll now go to Commissioner Barnwell.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is for the architect. I believe you said that you had no windows because the one wall was a zero-lit line construction.
Correct.
But aren't there fireproof windows that don't open that can go on the?
Yeah. If you incorporate fire, one-hour fire, the wall has to meet a one-hour fire rating per the code. And if you, you could do that with glass block, that's not necessarily the correct choice, but there is fire-rated glass that would probably qualify for that rating, and you could offer some more fenestration on that side.
Have you considered that?
We've talked about it. We thought our changes to date were adequate, given the situation and the screening of existing buildings.
So, and, and that would be a consideration from the inside, but from the outside, the wall, by, I think, any architectural standards is kind of, kind of blah. Are you, could you put some architectural treatments on that wall, so that it doesn't look quite as blank?
Well, I mean, we thought we did, so we did modify it, and, and we perhaps could add a few more, but it is a zero-property line wall, and we, we expect the future to experience this kind of growth up and down the street.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Commissioners. I believe that the, my fellow Commissioners have asked the majority of my questions. My, my only question, and I want to acknowledge that I really, as, as to the applicant team, I want to acknowledge that this project, you know, we really appreciate the work that you've done. Obviously, you have a local team here that is pushing this project forward, people that are very knowledgeable about the Milpus area, that have spent a long time in this area. Given that the displacement that we all, I think collectively, are concerned about in terms of the residents that are currently there, specifically the seniors, I just ask if the applicant team will consider increasing the amount of affordable units in this project. I know you do not, you're not required to in any way. I just ask that the applicant team consider it as they move forward in this, in the development of this project. But with that, I will go to comments from the commission. And again, this is just strictly comments before we make a motion. Whoever would like to make the motion will summarize the comments for the commission, and that will be our motion. First, we'll hear from Commissioner Peterson.
Thank you. Thank you for presenting the project today, and thank you to everybody for being here to voice your opinions. The state is tying our hands, I think the state is tying our hands, on what we're allowed to do, especially with density bonus, and it relates to height, density, the number of units and parking. And we're not exempt from those laws. Knowing that you have these rights, I appreciate the efforts that you've made to go above what's minimally, minimally required, to not use builder's remedy to its extent, and also your personal commitments to defending the rights of tenants. But I think we want to see what that looks like, what the plan is for that, to make sure that they're, you know, they do feel secure, that they know what's going on, that the public knows what's happening in this respect. I'm curious, of course, what more can be done about parking. Yes, we're going above the minimum .5 per unit, and thankfully, we're not asking for that as a concession, but if there is anything more that can be done from your end, on affordability, making sure that, you know, the folks who are low-income there have that right to return at the rate, whatever you can do and be proactive in that space would be greatly appreciated, including upping the number of affordable units, if possible. I know that you're not required to do that, but that's always something that the city needs. And then finally, being proactive and thinking about some kind of local preference for the non-deed-restricted affordable units, that is still something that we need to square, and I think it's going to take everybody to think about how we do that within the confines of fair housing law, and I've made this point before. So those are my comments, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner Peterson. We'll now go to Commissioner Wiskom.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ms. Kennedy, could you put up the slide that shows everything we're supposed to comment on, I think, design? And I'll, I'll open by saying, I appreciate all of you being here, both the applicant team and, and all the neighborhood people. And I agree with Commissioner Peterson. Our, our hands are really tied. I hate to keep saying this, it sounds like a broken record, but we, you know, we're, the, the project is entitled to, to go through. So the, so we're here to comment, and we give our comments, our majority comments, to the Architectural Board of Review. So I'll start with the design, okay? And the project's consistency with the general plan. Housing is, is our, one of our top goals, if not our top goal, actually, it is our top goal in our general plan. So I, I think this project meets the city's general plan goals. The only policy where I feel it's teetering on the edge is maybe the land use element policy, LG 12.2, which is the building size, bulk, and scale. Ensure that the proposed buildings are compatible in scale with the surrounding built environment. And that's, that's a tough finding to make, or a tough policy to, to agree to, because this is a huge project. But I think Milpus is going to be impacted by other big projects, and the area, the, the corridor is going to change. And it's one of the areas identified in our housing element as a, as a, whatever, Ms. Kennedy, help me out here with the language, with the...
The high-density area?
High-density, yes. The high-density area. I didn't know if that's the term that we use, but yeah, the high-density development. So I can tell you that I like the mix of units on each floor. I think it's important to have the studio, one-bedroom and two-bedroom mix on every floor. And I also appreciate the mix of affordable units on, on each floor. As Commissioner, I'm sorry, Vice Chair Boss pointed out, they, the drawing that I saw had them all clustered together on each floor, and I think the affordable units do need to be spread out throughout the whole floor. So I would, that's, that's a definite. They were all kind of clustered in one corner. I do like the tower element on the project, although it does add height. I think it anchors the building, and it provides some visual interest architecturally. And I like the archways. I think that they tend to soften the building. The open podium breaks up the mass. I think that that's important. It would just be a big, a big, big building without that podium there in the middle. I would love that in some way to be visually open to the public, if, if possible, through, you know, a window, or a gate, or something like that, just, just so it, it gives the impression of, you know, separate buildings rather than one. So I see Mr. Hochhauser nodding, so. And I definitely appreciate the stepping back of the building to the existing residential. I think that was, that's key to this project, is, is getting the, the height away from the street. And there were some public comment letters about story poles. I'm ambivalent on recommending those to ABR, but I think my comment on that would be that they should make the decision on whether story poles go up or not. I'm not willing to say that I agree with that. Some people see them, I think with the, with the, kind of the visual, the visual tools used by the architect to this point, it's almost, it's almost as good as story poles. I appreciate the average unit size, 630-ish square feet versus 811, so I think that's great. I would hope that staff goes for unbundled parking, or makes that part of the conditions of the project, so that people that don't have, don't pay for a parking space know that they don't have a place to put their car, and that they have to find some other place. The blank wall on the north side that Vice Chair Boss mentioned, I think there needs to be more articulation there. I, I understand the initial efforts to do that, but more fenestration or architectural treatments of some sort that Commissioner Barnwell mentioned, I think that's very important. And then finally, I think the landscaping, we really need to soften up the project with landscaping. So I think that's important. I know we saw a landscaping plan, but I think we need to try to find ways to add more green to the project, and particularly along Milpus and along East Gutierrez, just to, to get a sense of streetscape that belongs to a pedestrian, and not just a big looming building. So I'd like to see that happen. And I guess those are my comments, and those would be my recommendations. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Wiskom. Vice Chair Boss? Thank you, Chair. I can actually say ditto to Commissioner Wiskom and save us a little bit of time, but I want to emphasize a few points. One and two, to reiterate, the, the very low-income and the moderate units need to be distributed throughout the building, or throughout the, the project. In terms of size, bulk, and scale, the, the frontage view on Milpus wasn't overwhelming, but the view from the CVS parking lot really was striking to me. And I, I would have appreciated, and I think ABR may, may benefit from seeing the view also from Haley and Aliso Streets. I think it's really important to, to get a better sense of, of the project's size, bulk, and scale. The north elevation, I think Commissioner Barnwell mentioned some windows or treatments, and Commissioner Wiskom commented there. I'd like to see that as well. In terms of overall improvements, the increased number of parking stalls, I think because of the change in some use, that it, it wasn't a significant change in parking stalls or parking availability. I understand that you've maximized the compact, but would like to see some sort of, if there's an arrangement that can be made with businesses that have underutilized lots outside of business hour, something like that, there, there is going to be a significant impact on parking in the neighborhood. And then consistency with general plan, given the about, the 75 above moderate or market-rate units that are coming to this area, and the loss of the eight senior units, I am really concerned about gentrification in the area, and would like to see at least eight additional units in consideration of rehousing the seniors. So beyond the very low-income and moderate, I think that you should seriously consider eight additional affordable units, planning for the, the eight folks who are losing their housing. Of course, need tenant displacement plans and parking management plans. Was surprised that that hasn't been drafted already, although I understand it's not required at this point. Still something that this far into the project you have hopefully thought about, and just continue to be really concerned about traffic and parking impacts. Thank you. Thank you, Vice Chair Boss. We'll now hear from Commissioner Barnwell.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Madam, thank you, Madam Chair. I, insofar as the findings of the architecture, I think the architecture is beautiful. I do have one comment on that tower, which I wonder if one could rethink the mass of that. The view of it from the parking lot that was mentioned by Vice Chair Boss is, is correct. It's, I think it adds a very oddly, although it's attractive architecturally, I think it adds negatively to the feeling of the bulk of that building, particularly when you're looking at it from the side views. I know it's an architectural statement, but maybe a tower of, of something less than that mass. I would like to see some kind of treatment on what we're calling the north wall, either one-hour fire prevention glass windows, or some other architectural treatment. We, we use the phrase story poles as if it's a number, but it isn't a number. And we, on the, what I refer to as Pachanga Project, I think it was last week, we asked them to put up two or three story poles on the sidewalk, to give the neighborhood a sense of what it was. While I appreciate the architectural renderings and viewings, the, the neighborhood that we're talking about, they don't necessarily go to websites and open up computers and things like that to find out what's going on. So I would suggest to the ABR that they pick and choose four or five story poles that we could put up, so that you could see, if not the back portion, at least the street frontage of what that's going to look like. I think that would be a tip of the hat to the neighborhood. There's something, oh, the yellow curb, I wanted to ask you. You said there would be loading zone. I've noticed that the ordinance has changed, so that now the yellow curbs are 24-hour, reserved 24 hours for commercial parking. That's a change, correct? It used to be like nine to five, or something like that?
Commissioner Barnwell, through the chair, there, so, I think it's case-by-case specific, whether they're 24 hours, or whether they're restricted to the commercial uses. So that's something that we would analyze. And, and just to be aware, too, that, like, for this project and, and other projects, on-street parking is not guaranteed, nor is it the property of the adjacent property owners. I think that's a common misconception, that in front of your property, that you own it, and therefore you get to do whatever you do. So we typically wait till a property is in operation, and then cite if there's any necessities for loading, and it's not specific to the site, we look at the block. So with, with respect to that, or any ADA related, for the right of way.
Well, thank you. You've, I think you've heard indisputably from this commission that parking is a huge issue. And if that yellow curb were to go back to the way the city used to mark them, which is nine to five, that would mean that space would be available in the evening, when parking will be a crunch. So there's another space coming up. The, the whole issue of parking, I, I give myself this, as well as this entire room of people. The glorious downtown State Street corridor that we have is a direct result of a discussion of parking. When the Lacombra Plaza opened, we didn't have any parking downtown, and businesses fled or died. And the downtown business organization and the city of Santa Barbara began to build up those lots, to protect those businesses, so that they could continue to provide the money that the city is always worried about getting from retail sales. It is a discussion long overdue. You mentioned that it's somewhere in our future planning. I don't think, I think it should come to the front burner. I, and I don't know to the degree to which ABR can add any of these things, but I think a discussion of parking on Milpus is critical. a discussion of parking on Milpus is critical. And particularly, has it dawned on me that it is such as a result of the Pachanga discussion where a woman that I know has a business across the street, and she said, "My customers park at the curb," which I do too, so, and we don't have anything, any other place further than to park. So Mr. Ludwig mentioned that a few years ago, there were some discussions about, I think that's critical. And that's, that goes to the idea of our hands are tied, they're not tied. The city has, has something they can do, and that is to begin to develop some pocket parking areas over on the Milpus corridor. I am in favor of some form of managing the parking. I don't know how that plays out, and I don't know how, what ABR can do about that, but I know that the Santa Barbara Housing Authority is very adept at managing parking, and I think it would be something to be considered. I don't know what that actual plan would be. I sympathize with the neighbors. I really, really sympathize with them, particularly insofar as parking. Again, our hands are not tied. The next time this discussion comes up, I would suggest everybody, you know, let's get, let's get together and decide how we can have some parking up and down the Milpus corridor, because the comment is made frequently, it is not downtown. I take a little offense at that because it is a downtown. And who knows what it's going to be like in 15 or 20 years? It could very well be equivalent to a downtown. So I'd like to address it that way. And this project seems to have brought together all of these little issues that we've kind of been kicking down the road, and now they come to a head, has been expressed by several of my fellow commissioners. And it's really falls on the city's shoulders to begin to help to get those things done. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Barnwell. We'll now hear from Commissioner Delucchio.
I just want to clarify for the record, for Milpus, there is existing on-street parking that will be preserved.
Yes, I, I thank you very much. Yes, and you're right on that.
Thank you. Commissioner Delucchio.
Thank you, Chair. I have to admit, I parked in the CVS parking lot when I was doing the site visit. I could not find parking. I love the idea of park, pocket parks. I never heard of that before. Where I came from, we had pocket gardens. So that's a cool idea to explore perhaps. And I, I realize that there's 90 units here and it typically would require 90 parking spaces, and with the state density bonus, you only, you could do 45 spaces and you are doing 65 spaces. So you're doing more than, than you could. Not enough, but you are doing more. There are elevators in this building, by the way, Commissioner Barnwell.
I'm really glad to hear that.
And there's also parking stalls for delivery and, and service vehicles. I know there's one, so that's, that's, that's kind of cool. And there's generous open space here, where they're required to do like 6,000 square feet, and they're doing over almost 12,000 square feet. And there's, and I think you've now have generous setback on east residential side, the step-down approach. You call it a birthday cake or something?
Wedding cake.
Wedding cake? I call it a step-down approach. And on the Milpus side, I think you've also brought that down to like two, 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 two or three stories?
Wedding cake is that.
Same thing on the Milpus side. So those, those things help. The north side again, I agree, you need to articulate the, the north side wall some more perhaps. I understand it's against the property line, however, if you can give some relief there, that would be good. And, and things that we're actually talking about here are, are comments that the ABR made, some things they wanted you to look at. Also, I wanted to comment on, I agree that you need to un, to look at, unbundle the parking and also disperse, obviously, the units, the low and moderate units throughout the building. As far as I know that you, there's story polls have come up a little bit, and I know that you did some view simulations as a start, and I, I agree with Commissioner Wiskom that maybe the, have the ABR look at if they do need to do the story polls. And, and thank you for doing the shade and shadow study. You don't need to comment, but I don't know if you shared that with the ABR yet, but that was a good thing you did. That's something you should talk about some more when you go back to the ABR. I have all these things, and I guess the final thing I want to say is having to do with the, I know that when you go to ABR, you need to make compatibility findings. That's real key to this whole thing, is it compatible with the neighborhood? I will say, in looking at the, the land use element of the general plan, when you talk about the buildings, about the, the building, the, what is it, bulk and scale and, and that, it's, to me, it's, it, when I look at that, I'm concerned. I am concerned about ma, about making the compatibility finding. However, that's going to need to be made by, by the HLC, and so you need to do your work and, and obviously, because the last time they did not think it, they could make the findings. So you need to obviously go back to them and, and, and see based on what you've done if that finding can be made. I, I do see you've done, you've done work on the project. You've, you've listened to what they had said and you've done some work on it, but I, I just don't know if that's far enough, but again, I'll just leave it at that for now to be addressed with ABR. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Delucchio. I'll now go to Commissioner Bauckey.
Thank you, Madam Chair. For the sake of time, I'm just going to run through my comments. Some of them, I'll just say ditto. As to the constraints, I will ditto Commissioner Peterson's comments as to unbundled parking. I think another, a number of our commissioners have addressed that. I agree that the unbundling should be a requirement of this project. As to size, bulk and scale, I really have a hard time with this project being compatible with the neighborhood. I don't think it's there yet. Also, I think the quality of the architecture is not there yet. That's the Architecture Review Board's task to get it there. But I sort of look in reference to the project we saw just a few weeks ago at 518, 524 Milpus as something that's going to be built in the neighborhood. And this project should be equal to, it shouldn't be worse than. And I think the Architecture Review Board should, should look to get this, this project up to that standard. I have some concern about, about the livability of some of the units. There's limited or no natural light in some of the units. And we have this blank wall situation, which clearly is not acceptable. There are ways to address it, which Commissioner Barnwell addressed, and the applicants actually made comments on that. I second the comments of Commissioner Boss as to the replacement and displacement of the existing tenants. Those eight tenants should be, should be cared for well, and I think the ownership, Mr. Ludwig, I think has the commitment to do so. It's just a case of it just needs to be, you know, such that, we know those people will have a place to go, and they're just not left out. And I, I think he's made, made the commitment to do that, and I think, I think that's something that just needs to be done. But I would also think that eight more affordable units should be, you know, made available in this project for them to move into beyond the state density bonus. I do appreciate the smaller units this project has. This is something we've seen in the AUD projects in which we haven't gotten. So this, finally, we got one that actually has smaller units, and I really appreciate that. I would second the comments of Commissioner Barnwell, still parking is a holistic thing. I've pitched that many a time, and I think Jessica knows, that's my thing, is it's a system thing, and it should be done by neighborhood. And then I really believe the staff should provide the Architects Review Board a consistency analysis of the Haley-Milpus Design Manual and the Objective Design Standards for reference in their considerations, especially as to the streetscape on, on Milpus. It's really, it doesn't feel right to me, and I didn't get in the time to dig into why it doesn't feel right, but there's something not right as to that, that interface on, on, on Milpus, and it may be just it's the massing of the building. But those are my comments. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Bauckey. So for simplicity purposes, I will really echo all of Commissioner Bauckey's comments. I agree with the majority of the comments made on this commission already. My only other second would be, I think, to what Commissioner Wiskom said that wasn't mentioned by others, is on the landscaping, is just to really ensure that there's as much greenery as possible, that we can, you know, break this up more with more foliage. And then, again, I don't want to reiterate what everybody has said, but I, I do really agree with the importance of addressing the displaced tenants. Our, our ask very nicely, because we know that you are already not going to the extent that you could go, but if you would consider more affordability, we appreciate that. So again, I will echo all of the comments of Commissioner Bauckey, but then, again, I just want to say thank you to this applicant team. We are very aware that you could go, you know, a lot higher in height limit, you could go higher in the size, bulk and scale of this, you could go lower on parking. So we do really appreciate the fact that you have, you know, as a local team, have taken efforts to take into consideration the needs of our community. I hope that the comments of this commission can further kind of influence how you can even make this a little bit better and more tailored to, to addressing the concerns that you heard today from the community, but we very much acknowledge that you have put in a lot of effort to this, so I want to thank you for that. And with that, can I get a motion that summarizes the comments provided by the commission? Wonderful. Commissioner Wiskom.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm not sure, some people, some of our commissioners didn't comment on the architecture. I know Commissioner Bauckey said it wasn't quite there yet. Before I get to this, could you just tell me what you mean by that, please?
Well, I think the, there's a whole lot of blank facades on here, blank walls, lack of fenestration in a number of cases. The detailing's not there. I, I just go back to reference that, you know. We all saw the 518 project, and, you know, if you put the two of these, those two projects together, you would definitely, it's sort of a glaring example, even though the style's the same, same type of style, the quality of what you see, just, you know, this is honestly just isn't there, and that's, that's why you get these comments from the members of the public saying it's institutional or, or looks like a prison or things like that. It's just not there. And that's, that's a non-trained people making those comments, so that, that's where I was coming from.
Thank you for that. Okay. And, and I know that Commissioner Barnwell talked about the tower element, so.
Thank you, yes.
I'll get to that, yeah. I knew that's where you were going. I didn't miss it, so. Okay, so, for a motion. And we can take out anything that, you know, doesn't agree with everyone. I'm going to start with land use element policy, LG 12.2, Building Size, Bulk and Scale, which says, ensure that proposed buildings are compatible in scale with surrounding built environment. And I feel that this commission is feeling that that, that particular general plan policy is a little bit tenuous with regard to this project. More than, okay. Okay. I'll just say tenuous with respect to this project. And I did like the mix of units on each floor. I thought that they were, each floor has a real big mix. And, but as, we would like to see the affordable units spread out over each floor and not clustered at, at one end, which they seem to be doing in most locations now, on most of the floors. The tower element, I think I've heard they, some of my fellow commissioners say that they like the element, they feel that it anchors the building. I think that ABR should study the mass of the tower to possibly reduce it, make it not quite so fat, I think, yeah. Pretty use a real architectural term. And I do like the archways. I think that's a good start to a Santa Barbara architecture style. But I, the commission feels that the architecture is not quite there yet. The, the north, the north elevation is particularly, particularly disturbing. It, it needs more fen, fenestration or detailing or something, some architectural treatment that's going to make it more interesting than where it is now. I did say that, no one else commented on this, I did say that I liked the, the open podium, I felt it broke up the mass. It would be really nice if you could see that from outside somehow. Good. Oh, okay, you can, good. Okay. Okay, I could, I didn't get that. And then we all, as a commission, appreciated the wedding cake approach to the building. And the story polls, I think ABR should decide whether, whether they want to require story polls or not. My comment about story polls is sometimes when they go up, you get a lot more neighbors looking at, at, getting a lot more neighbors looking at the project that, that weren't aware of it and hadn't been noticed about it. So I'm not against story polls, they're frightfully expensive, but this is a big project. So 630 square foot unit size, we appreciate the unit size. That's an approximate size versus the 800-plus unit size that it could be. I think we all agree as a commission that, that we want unbundled parking, and that should be a requirement. More landscaping to soften the impact of the, of the building. I talked about the blank wall. View from east Aliso Street. Did you wanted, Commissioner Boss?
Yes, I think included in the rendering should be the, or the simulation, the, from Haley and Aliso Street.
Okay. Okay. So, and I think that this is more of a comment for the applicant and staff. I think it's, it's a good idea to have, if possible, an arrangement with a nearby business for more parking. We did it on another project just last week, right? It was last week, I think. On the, yeah, where the parking was on, on Haley, yeah. Yeah, you had to walk from the building, yeah. So. But at any rate, let's see, what else here? Oh, the commercial loading, analyze the hours of that. That's, that's important and try to maybe limit them so we could use those parking spaces. Most of the commissioners like the general internal open space or, or the open space of the building. We really do need to work on the landscaping, though. And there was some concern with the livability of the units, so ABR should look at that for light and air. I think that's what Commissioner Bauckey was saying. So really to study that, that the, not only the architecture, but the, the detailing and the, I'm going to use the, another very technical architectural term, to consider ways to de-institutionalize the look of the building. I think that's, that, okay. And as far, since our housing element is the, or housing is first and foremost in our general plan, in our top priority, I think that we, as a commission, can agree that, for the most part, that it meets our general plan policies. That's, I think it.
Second the motion.
What, are we going to put something about the, about, asking about putting more affordable units in, in the building? About potentially looking to put more affordable units in the building?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. That, that's right here along the side, and I forgot.
And also to, to maybe to, to address, to address the displaced tenants.
Right, right. Well, we have, Ms. Osmeringer says we have an ordinance that addresses them both, both.
Right, there's ordinance and state law.
Yeah. Yeah, it's ordinance and state law, so we don't really have to get into that. But we, I do want to add to the motion, if everyone agrees, that we would like the applicant to consider adding eight additional affordable units to replace the senior units that are going to be demolished.
If I can say some praise, can we say we, we do appreciate the shade and shadow study? I want that to be, if we can pass it on to ABR, because that's a really important study.
Appreciate the shade study? The solar study?
The solar study, it looked as shade and shadow, so.
Okay, that's fine, yeah.
I second, I second the amendments.
Chair Wardlow, can I make one, just minor refinement on the unbundled parking? We can't unbundle the tandem. We can't unbundle the tandem spaces per, outside of that, that it can be unbundled, because the tandem spaces have to be assigned to one unit.
Oh, that's right. And there's quite a few of those, aren't there? Yeah. Okay. Okay. Well.
I concur with her comment, because operationally, that would be very problematic.
Yeah.
They probably should be for the larger units in the first place.
Yeah. Okay. So we can make that amendment to the motion, then?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, I just, I'll third it.
So we have a motion. Can we have a roll call vote?
Madam Chair, can we have comments on the motion?
Sure.
I think that's Robert's next step. The parking, to go back again to the parking, I don't know who's designing your parking, but in pathways and roads, there's this thing called a path of preference, where regardless of where you put the sidewalk, people are going to walk a certain way, because that's just the way. And I know the parking design is tight, but if there is a way that you can design it such that eventually there's a place where people can park, like there's a place where tandem parking can occur with, you know, without disrupting that, give those kinds of things thought. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Okay, so we have a motion. Can we have a roll call vote, please? Thank you, Chair Wardlow. I'll begin with Commissioner Delucio.
Yes.
Commissioner Barnwell?
Yes.
Commissioner Wiskom?
Yes.
Commissioner Bauckey?
Yes.
Vice Chair Boss?
Yes.
And Chair Wardlow?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you all. And thank you again to the applicant and to the public for coming today. We appreciate everyone's time and engagement on this. We will now move to the administrative portion of the agenda. Do we have any committee and liaison reports? We'll start with staff hearing officer.
Real fast. There was a hearing officer meeting yesterday, 319, and there was approval of a coastal development permit for an ADU at 222 Los Andas. And 923 Castillo, there was an approval for a one-year extension at 923 Los Castillo for the tentative subdivision map approved by the Planning Commission back in February 13, 2020. There was a three, two-bedroom condos with seven on-grade parking spaces on a vacant 9,000-square-foot lot adjacent to the Mission Creek. I also have, and I went to the airport commission also. Do you want me to give a quick one on that? This is a fun one, actually. They actually have a lease agreement now with the former Elephant Bar Restaurant, location on Firestone Road. The owner of the Santa Barbara Cider Company in Galita is going to open a food hall concept using five, get the food trucks. The building's pretty rundown, so there actually, there'll be an FBO, fixed-based operators, I guess, an RFP going out to redevelopment, redevelop that site with the airport. But in the meantime, so they're not going to renovate the kitchen, they're going to have five food trucks. And, but the, but everything's going to be contained inside. You order in, centralize ordering, centralize food delivery, and you stay, and you do it all in the, inside the former restaurant, restaurant. So I think that was kind of clever.
May I ask a question? What about cocktails?
They will have a type 47, but they will serve beer and wine, et cetera.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. That's my report.
Thank you, Commissioner Delucio. Do we have any other liaison reports? Nope? All right. With that, thank you. It is now 4:08, and that concludes our March 20, 2025 Planning Commission hearing. Our next meeting is tentatively scheduled for Thursday, April 3, 2025. Thank you all for being here, and have a wonderful rest of your day.